Welcome all. We're gonna start off with our invocation tonight by Chaplain James Kramer of Virginia Beach Police Department, Third Precinct. If you can all please rise.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for this time that we can come together and we can accomplish this business that is set before this council tonight. Pray for each witness, each person that speaks, that you would give them clarity of mind and clarity of speech. I pray for wisdom, for respect, for peace, and for good judgment. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. All present except for Mr. Tower, who's out of town.
Okay, could I have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved. Thank you.
Okay, vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have certified the closed session be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, do I have a motion to certify the minutes of the informal informal sessions of December 10, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
Vote is open.
It is now.
There we go.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the minutes that's submitted.
Okay, do we have any speakers on the public hearing for polling place change at Rudy Precinct to W.T. Cook Elementary School?
No speakers, sir.
Do we have any speakers on the declaration and sale of excess property at 961 square feet portion of 100-foot strip boundary surrounding Lake Bradford adjacent to 4965 Athens Boulevard?
No speakers, sir.
No speakers? Okay, Mr. Wood, can we do the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under the consent agenda, under ordinances and resolutions. Item I, one ordinance to amend the city code section A 10-1, change in polling location, Ray Rudy Precinct to W.T. Cook Elementary School. B 35-35 to revise the filing deadline from September 30th to August 30th regarding equalization of assessments. Excuse me. Item I, two ordinance to declare a 961-plus-or-minus-square-foot portion of the 100-foot strip boundary surrounding Lake Bradford adjacent to 4965 Athens Boulevard to be in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to convey same to Frederick C. Karam. Item I, three resolutions to supplement the city's 2020 legislative agenda. Item A, change the public notice requirements regarding planning commission meetings. Item five, ordinance to authorize and adopt a city council policy regarding council member-sponsored forums and events. Item seven, resolution to create an in-house pharmacy exploratory committee regarding study for implementing an in-house pharmacy program for city and public school employees. Item eight, resolution to establish Endurance Medical Transport LLC and authorize an annual EMS permit regarding private ambulance services. Item nine, ordinance to authorize and accept a dedication of easements regarding Lanaven Parkway Corridor Improvements Project CIP 9-028. Item 10, ordinance to authorize a temporary encroachment into a portion of city-owned utility easement at 582 Lanaven Parkway regarding lighted sign. Item 11, ordinance just to accept an appropriate A $63,250 from the Virginia Department of Social Services to the FY 2019-20 Human Services Operating Budget regarding activities associated with kinship navigator program. Item B, $152,895 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to the FY 2019-20 Human Services Operating Budget and establish two full-time and one part-time position regarding STEP VA outpatient behavioral health services program. Item C, $130,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to the FY 2019-20 Human Services Operating Budget and establish one full-time position regarding medication-assisted treatment program at the Pathway Center. Item 12, ordinance to accept $28,114 from the Department of Criminal Justice Services to the FY 2019-20 Human Services Operating Budget and appropriate $1,959 to Human Services Community Corrections and Pre-Trial Services Division regarding staff training and development.
Open a public hearing, I'm planning.
Under planning, item J, one RHK Properties LLC for modification of conditions regarding motor vehicle sales at 2661 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Beach District. Item three, HRVB Boulevard LLC, Collins Square Associates LP for a conditional use permit regarding indoor recreational facility at 4001 Virginia Beach Boulevard in Lynn Haven District. Item four, Beach Spirits LLC, Faimu LLC for a conditional use permit regarding a craft distillery at 981 Laskin Road in the Beach District. Item five, Pembroke Square Associates LLC for a conditional use permit regarding indoor recreational facility at 4554 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Bayside District. Item six, New Life Tabernacle of Virginia Beach Incorporated for a conditional use permit regarding religious use at 3157 Ship's Corner Road, Suites 101 and 104 in the Rose Hall District. Item seven, Cell Co. Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless, John S. Jr. and Karen S. Waller for a conditional use permit regarding Communications Tower at 2313 Tree Song Trail in the Princess Anne District. Item eight, CEBT Properties LLC, VB Homes Design Build LLC for conditional use permits regarding short-term rentals at 402B 27th Street, 317, 26 and 1/2 Street, 320 27th Street, 320 26 and 1/2 Street, 617 23rd Street, Unit 1 and Unit 5. And that's consent for deferral to February 4th. Item nine, CNC Development Company for conditional use permits regarding short-term rentals. A, 2416 Arctic Avenue. B, 403 25th Street. Again, consent for defer to February 4th. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay. Okay, we're getting ready to move on to ordinances and resolutions. I want to remind everyone that the city council speaker policy that also that allows certain representatives of groups to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name and telephone number to the clerk of record. Also, we have several items under ordinances and resolution where only one speaker signed up. As such, the city clerk will call the speaker and identify that each items that have been registered on. The speaker will receive three minutes to comment on each item. Okay, we're gonna start with the planning items first to expedite things. Okay, and I guess we're gonna start with number, planning item two, Raw Enterprises Incorporated, Courthouse Out parcel A1B2 LLC.
First Speaker is Eddie Burdon.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Jones, members of council. City clerk, well, actually, the city manager is passing out some handouts for everybody. For the record, my name's Eddie Burdon, I'm a Virginia Beach attorney, and I have the pleasure of coming before the council this evening representing the developers, contract purchasers of this piece of property. I want to give you a little history. This is a existing B2-zoned retail parcel with 3.22 acres of size at the corner of, right to the north of us here at Nemo Parkway and Princess Anne Road at the gateway, the entrance to the Courthouse Historic District and the Municipal Center Complex. It was a part of the Courthouse Marketplace development, actually is a part of Courthouse Marketplace development, rezoned commercial in 2004 and modified in 2007. All of the stormwater management infrastructure for this parcel was engineered with the rest of the Courthouse Marketplace Center over a decade ago. Those engineering plans and infrastructure were approved by the city, bonded by the developer, Armona Hoffler, installed, inspected, and accepted when the core of the Courthouse Marketplace was developed. That included this 3.22-acre parcel, which was projected in all of the calculations to have a 75% impervious cover for the purpose of the stormwater management facility capacity for the entire center, and that was calculated. This application represents a, at least, a 15% reduction in the impervious surface over what was used to calculate the size of the stormwater facilities for the entire property. Yet because of this conditional rezoning, your staff has required that we upgrade the stormwater infrastructure to meet proposed new standards. And my clients, along with Armona Hoffler, the property owner, have chose over 18 months ago, close to two years ago, not to dispute or fight that. We have worked diligently and patiently with the city as all the analysis and all the the consultants' reports were all compiled, et cetera, et cetera. And with this proposed development of this site, we will be adding a very substantial, at a very substantial cost to my clients and Armona Hoffler, 67,000 cubic feet of additional subsurface stormwater storage capacity on this site. Capacity that would, in my opinion, legally not be required if the site were developed by right as it is presently zoned at B2. So we've got less impervious surface and all this additional stormwater storage capacity. Now, I wanted to put that on the record for Jared, who's here, so that he wanted to make sure that that was on the record. And I'll put it on the record. So here's the plan. The, and I, the handouts have, you know, all the elevations and all the plans and all of the light fixtures and everything else, this has all been heartily endorsed by the Historic Review Board at the gateway to the Municipal Center and the Courthouse area. And staff, going back to Barry Frankenfield, he was planning director, and since Mr. Tahan has taken his place, been very supportive of this, it creates a mixed-use development. We've got the assisted living directly adjacent to us, to the north, and the apartment complex that's been developed since the Courthouse Marketplace, that's directly behind it, and that's 18 units per acre. The, these are three-sided brick, the backside are hardy plank, so all the exterior surface, you know, high-quality material. Everything that's outbound, out-facing, the access road that runs between us and the assisted living, Princess Anne Road and Nemo Parkway, all of that's brick, everything you see is brick. The only, the backs of the units are a hardy plank. Each unit has a two-car garage and two parking spaces. There are also 13 parking spaces for guests, but, you know, the garage spaces technically don't count. But there are four parking spaces with each unit. We have beautiful wrought iron-style fencing along the frontages, Princess Anne Road, and the access road that exists there, we're not creating any new access whatsoever from either Princess Anne or Nemo Parkway. You have hedge rows on each, you've got, you know, connections to sidewalks that we'll be putting in along Princess Anne Road. The units facing Princess Anne Road are back over 100 feet from the pavement at the edge of the road. And the same is true with regard to Nemo Parkway. It gets a little closer as you move to the west, but it's all heavily wooded and it's still not close to Nemo Parkway. The, we've got a courtyard area in the middle. Again, access comes in off of Princess Anne Road here. Also, there's a drive aisle between the property and the 711, another drive aisle coming in here, and the road coming in, and then you go through the center to the next road. The, I believe, this may be a public right-of-way, the next one down is private. And it, but again, no, nothing new, and this is all developed by Armona Hoffler. Nothing new as far as access is concerned. These units are two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, and they will be priced 360 to 400,000. And the traffic generation versus what it's currently zoned, it's a six-fold decrease in traffic generation. And it's a mixed-use, perfect development, you can walk, get your groceries, the restaurants, it's a nice commercial center there. It's, you know, we've got, again, the 18-unit-per-acre apartments on the backside and the the assisted living that is adjacent to the north. And again, I recommend that all of the information that's been provided in the handout to you for review. The Historic Review Board, as I said, liked it, everyone has been favorable, and most importantly, the clients have worked diligently, as, along with staff, to deal with the stormwater issues. And I just think it's a home run, and it'd be a far more attractive entrance to this area than a big parking lot and additional retail. And this is in one of the few areas that the residential can go because it's not in a noise zone. It's in the catcher's mitt where we can provide some rooftops for people who want to live close to where they work down here at the municipal center. And, you know, all the recreational facilities and amenities that are close by by bike. And it just, it's a mixed-use development that we think is a win-win for everybody, and certainly a win far as storage, stormwater is concerned. We have not had any opposition to the application up until now, and I'm not, if it's Mr. Brandon Wine, I'm not, I think he wants to make sure we're actually gonna do what we say with regard to creating the additional stormwater storage capacity. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Rosemary?
It's very attractive, Eddie. Aren't these have one-bedroom, first-floor masters?
Yeah, there'll be some, I think there are some first-floor masters, but they're all two and three, did you say four-bedroom?
My question was, do any of these have any first-floor masters?
Yes, yes, they do.
Because that's really...
Yes, ma'am. But they're only two- and three-bedroom units, so they're not anticipated to have very many.
Yeah, people are really looking for first-floor masters now.
Yep, Barbara.
Well, you make it sound so beautiful. I hope everybody went through the parking lot over there at the 711 to get to this property, because that's the way you get to it. This is a little over three acres. That's an out parcel from the shopping center. And it will have 37 families living on it, potentially. 37 families living here who need to go through the shopping center to get home. Is it correct that these are drive aisles?
First of all, the, what we absolutely anticipate is that the majority of the traffic will come in off of Princess Anne Road and come in here. Okay? So we, again, I'm not gonna dispute the fact that someone, you know, coming from the west, or potentially even coming from the east, might come in here and come in along this drive aisle. They also can come in here and come down and come in, there's a drive aisle here as well. So there's, you have a drive aisle here, drive aisle here, drive aisle here. They're all private, just like, just like the roads in every condominium, they're private. So all these roads are privately maintained.
Otherwise, they're in the shopping center. But the only way in and out is a right turn in and a right turn out. For Princess Anne Road, you have to be coming east, and you have to take the right turn in, and then you leave, it's a right turn out. Or if you're coming in from Nemo, you come up to that other entranceway to the shopping center, and that's a right turn in and a right turn out. So if you want to go left when you're coming out, you have to make a U-turn or either go all the way through the shopping center to come out at George Mason.
Can I, can I, the one thing I'll mention, because I'm in this shopping center a lot. I'm a trop smoothie junkie. And the way most of the traffic actually comes out, that's going, including myself, that's going back towards town center. You come out here, you come down, and this light has all been designed and everything for U-turns. And that's what, that's what we do. You can certainly go down and come out the light, and you're absolutely correct in your recitation. You can come out the light and come down and take, and then go this way, but it's actually, it's actually quicker to do it this way. But that, and that is what, that movement is made all, every day, all day.
I know.
Okay, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
37 families, you know, doing this all the time to go anyplace. You mentioned that...
If it were a shopping center, they'd be doing the same movement.
This parcel, I mean, it's got that, all the green here is along the sidewalks. There's not even a tot lot in here. You say there's that village, that area in there that's the only kind of open space, and is that gonna be developed as any kind of tot lot or anything?
Well, it's conceivable, but these units are not really designed for young families. It's, that's what I'm saying, they're mostly for people who are a little older, empty nesters. There are two bedrooms and some three. That's certainly something that could be done if that's a necessity or a need based on the number of buyers. But we also, I would suggest that there are, this is the area of the city that has the biggest concentration of recreational facilities in very close proximity.
Okay, I'll just mention, all right.
Okay.
There's no place for a kid to throw a football here, that's for darn sure. But there's no park. The closest park is over in, off of Holland Road at Christopher Farms. It's a 19-minute walk. Our, what we try to do as a national standard is to have a park within 10 minutes, a 10-minute walk. There's no recreational area here at all.
Well, there's, there is the old courthouse, elementary school, ball field, there's Callum High School that's right around the corner, and you've got the rec. center right down Nemo Parkway.
Way down Nemo Parkway, but there's no place for a kid to play.
That's what the, that's what the, the rec. center serves all this property.
Or walk around or anything. I just look at 37 families here, and it just doesn't seem the right place to put 37 families. And I'm having a lot of trouble with it. Now, did you find out how school buses, because, I mean, this isn't age-restricted. So they're gonna be kids, and they give us a potential, all right.
And the hundreds of apartments aren't age-restricted either, but the school buses can 100% come into this facility, and they access the apartments through the same...
Well, that's an entirely different development, that's...
What's a part, but it's also, it also uses the same roads that we're talking about.
They will come in through that 711 parking lot to...
Actually, again, I would anticipate, but that's up to the school board and how they do their bus routes.
I'm just thinking of the kids catching the bus, and they're gonna be intermingling with all this commercial traffic.
Well, we're not, we're not, no one's suggesting that the kids catching the bus are going out here in the shopping center. It's gonna, it's gonna be within the development, which the school board has confirmed, or school representatives have confirmed, this is the way it works in a lot of mixed-use developments and in developments of condos throughout the city. The school bus, just like the school bus goes and picks up the kids from the apartments, you know, they come in off George Mason and go in and pick up the kids in the apartment.
Okay, well...
But they absolutely can, just like fire and rescue and police all can, you know, have the right to come in.
Where are the dumpsters and the trash pickup?
Well, the trash pickup has to be private. Excuse me.
Dumpster.
And, well, I think it's gonna be in, it's, I don't think they're picking it up pri, I mean, in a dumpster. I think they're picking up, they pick up, every unit has to put them out on the street, and they come by and pick them up. It's not, we're not using a dumpster. There's no, there won't be any dumpsters. But we have to hire the private, you know, pickup, but they come through the neighborhood and pick up on the day of pickup.
All right.
And I certainly respect, respect what you, you know, what your concerns are from this assembly.
I know that a lot.
John?
Just have some fundamental infrastructure. So is the, I know the streets are private, I think I heard you say that, the road is private, correct?
Yes, like all condos, yes, sir.
All right, just making sure for the record.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
But are you owning the underlying utilities, water, and sewer as well? Or is that the responsibility of the city?
All of, all of the utilities are already there. I mean, we have to extend them, but they're there for the commercial development that was going to...
Right, so now that sewer connection's coming to the house, they have, all that will now be serviced by private folks. No one will be calling public utilities to come check their sewer line and check their clean-out. That's why I'm trying to ask, is the infrastructure, since this is private property, it's all private, the roads are private, are the utilities' infrastructure that brings the waste to the public part of the trunk line, the responsibility of the condo? Or does the city have responsibility for infrastructure that's being put in?
I should know the answer to that, Mr. Moss, but I'm getting old and feeble-minded. I am, I, well, I think staff can answer the question better than I can, probably. My, my belief is that it's, everybody gets a separate bill from the city. It's not billed to the condo association, is what I understand. Whether there are easements for those lines or the association has responsibility, I'm not gonna sit here and...
I'll ask the staff at the appropriate time, thank you.
Bobby, help out here.
Let them answer that, I'm sorry, I wish I could answer it.
Councilman Moss, the utilities are private, which will be the responsibility of either the homeowners association or each individual unit owner. They are condos, so they would be the association.
Thank you very much.
I thought that was the answer, but I want to say it and then it not be true.
They will also be responsible for the long-term maintenance of the subsurface drainage system.
That's correct.
So these are gonna have a nice condo fee.
Just like, just like everybody else's nice condo fee, yes, ma'am. They will, they will have, they will definitely have a condo fee, yes, ma'am.
We'll all be working for Eddie.
Yes, nothing's free, that's exactly right.
Okay, anybody else question from the dais? Any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Eddie.
Next speaker is Jared Brandon Wine, and then after Mr. Brandon Wine is Mark Johnson.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. I am Jared Brandon Wine. I'm the executive director of Back Bay Restoration Foundation, but I'm not here for the foundation. I'm here as a private citizen. Wanted that to be noted. I was pleased to hear Eddie talking about stormwater and increasing stormwater capacity. However, we didn't see any of that in the planning documents that were sent out. I think it's very important for that to be codified in any upzoning that the city is going to give them. I mean, I particularly noted that in the planning documents, the Development Services Center said that they were confident that the submitted strategy has the potential to successfully comply with stormwater regulations for this site. Potential doesn't, in the way I read it, doesn't mean it will. And in that vein, I also looked at all the proffers, which to me, the five proffers that the developers are offering aren't really proffers. They don't really give anything to the citizens of Virginia Beach. So what I would propose, what I'd like to see is a proffer where the developers post a bond for stormwater in the future, so that if the best-laid plans of mice and men do not turn out to be, to have the potential, that the city isn't stuck with the bill for fixing those problems as we've had to do in so many developments in Virginia Beach. I think that's a reasonable request, so that if it doesn't work. And after hearing what Eddie said, I'm sure that they have the best intentions to handle their stormwater properly. But if it doesn't work, I would hate to see the city have to come to the rescue once again. And that's basically the only comments that I have.
Any questions for the speaker? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mark Johnson, after Mr. Johnson is Marla Godwin.
Good evening.
Good day, Mayor, Council. Okay, so, my name's Mark Johnson, I live on Back Bay. And what I see with this application is a problem for Princess Anne District. We have a unique water problem here. And until we figure out what to do with, with it, you know, the water in Back Bay and West Neck where this particular project's going to feed into, should it not work, we should be very careful with zoning changes. I think 37 units of housing on a two-and-a-half acre, or a three-and-a-half acre, whatever it is, is kind of ridiculous. It's bad enough that it got approved from agriculture in the first place, but I realize that was a long time ago. So we know now what we know, but we don't, we're not learning from what we know. So I think we ought to keep it at what it's zoned for originally, which is business. If you can't find another CVC or CBS, quick-change lube, and a auto parts store to fit in that area, which is kind of like what it was intended, then just leave it open. I mean, why are we gonna... I mean, why are we gonna rezone it again? We'll never be able to change it. Once it's zoned family, it's gonna stay family, and that's not the kind of place I'd want to raise a family, or my grandkids. So, if we missed planning on this one, I missed planning by some communication problem, but when I was at planning before and spoke about something that this particular developer wanted to do, I was told that this is what we've done for the last fifty years, and it's kind of...you know, that's the way we've been doing business for fifty years. So, are we gonna continue to do this kind of business for the next fifty years, and we're gonna end up with all these places for people to live that are flooded? Maybe not, but maybe so. So, anyway, change is hard, and I'd really appreciate it if you would just like wait until we figure out what's going on with Back Bay, what's going on with West Neck, let's get the science, and then move on it if it's appropriate, but I don't think it is right now.
Thank you.
Marla Godwin. That's all the speakers.
Okay. At this point, do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Brandon, I'm sorry, rebuttal.
Just briefly, I want to address Jared's concerns, and I appreciate them, and even Mr. Johnson's. First of all, this, and I think that Mr. Johnson did mention West Neck, but this does not drain into Back Bay, just to be clear. It's really a downzoning, supposed to down...a downzoning from the commercial zoning, it's a reduction in impervious surface, and it's a reduction in traffic. The...in order to get site plan approval, in order to even get here, we have run the gauntlet of all the new proposed, that aren't even law yet, stormwater requirements, and all of the expert...there's a...I've forgotten the name of the programs and all that have been run. That's what's taken eighteen months, to make sure that this can meet those new standards. We must meet those new standards to get site plan approval. We...if a bond is required, then, which typically is for putting in this infrastructure, that will be posted with the site plan approval. And then there's post-completion maintenance period for that bond. Long-term, it is the association's responsibility. These subsurface drainage facilities exist throughout the city, have for decades. They're not difficult to maintain. There is some cost involved, no doubt about it, but they...to my knowledge, I'm not aware of them, any of them having failed. Some of the smaller systems and residential, single-family stuff have been a problem, but these types of systems are maintained by professionals, and they're under contract, the associations, to do that. So, I'm...no...it's not just that we're hoping this will work, this is above and beyond what could happen on the property today if it were developed commercially, and that's why I think it's a stormwater win all the way around.
Okay, John. Mr. Brandon, did your client use the city model but run it with your own data? You talked about the stormwater, the sixty-seven thousand cubic feet, did you export the city's algorithm and then apply your data and run that?
That is exactly the process that has unfolded.
Now, is this...
But I'm not an expert on this, so don't try to put me in the box.
Because none of that information is in the packet we have. So, is the city staff in possession of the results that they then validated? Was the information you did provided to the staff?
Correct.
Okay, we can ask the staff about that, because we don't have that information.
Yeah, that's what this...since we instituted, you know...
I'm with you, you don't have to go...I understand how that process works, I'm just trying to make sure if you provide the data and we ran it, or you ran it and provided us the outcome results, that's fine. Now, you mentioned that we were downzoning the property. Now, that's not exactly true. Generally speaking, it is changing, because traditionally, commercial property had a greater value than residential property because of the income-generating thing. But the new market demand, and the demand for B2 in retail has changed, such that now, that's why this is residential, in fact, the economic value of this application is really greater than the underlying B2 in current market conditions.
Well, especially here where the rooftops are restricted because of the Navy. And...but I would also suggest, however, from a traffic standpoint, and from an impervious surface standpoint, the two things that are important, it is a downzoning.
True, but from an economic value point of view, it is an upzoning in terms of return on investment.
Based on today's marketplace, and based on the lack of ability to put rooftops and the other commercials that have developed since then, and...
It isn't presidential by decision, I'm just trying to clarify for the listening public.
It's mixed.
Thank you.
Rosemary.
So, Eddie, you talked about the bond that will be provided, how long will that bond be in place?
Well, as I understand the way it works, and has worked in the past, when you get your site plan approval, you bond the infrastructure improvements, so that once they're completed, they're inspected throughout the process, and then they're, you know, approved, and then the part of the bond is released, and then there's a bond that goes in for another year or two to make sure there aren't any problems, et cetera, et cetera, and then after that, the bonds are released. But I don't know, it's eighteen months, twelve months, twenty-four months, but it's some short period of time beyond when it's completed and occupancy can take...
Make sure that you made it work properly, and...
Right. It's...there's a term for it, I'm sorry, I'm not, you know...
Performance?
It might be performance bond, I think that's right.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have some questions for staff, but I'll wait for the motion.
Okay, do we have a motion?
All right. Well, I'm gonna make a motion, and I've got a feeling it may not be the popular one, but I understand that there's gonna be some less pervious surface, less impervious surface. I understand that maybe the traffic count might be lower, but I look at this idea of people getting in and out from their homes as the way that they're gonna have to live, and I have been over there since I've been aware of this application, over and over and over again, looking at this three-point-two-acre site, how it's situated, and say, is that really the right place to put thirty-two families? And I cannot get a yes answer. And my motion is gonna be to deny.
Grab a second.
I'll second that for the point of discussion. I want to direct some questions to staff, if I could, please. So, you're in possession of the, I'll call it the hydrology information, the watershed information, which...and I hope in the future, I know I've asked this before, that we would get those quantitative results, maybe everyone doesn't like to read those things, but I do, because I think...so, when I look at the new...so, the total storage area in terms of cubic feet is at steady state before rainfall, and that particular outfall is...what is that? What does that hundred...what does our new standard say it has to absorb? So, there's obviously, there's something always there at barometric pressure, there has to certain volume that's a steady state, and then there's supposed to be the take that takes a ten-year and a hundred-year surge. Can you come up here and share with us the analytical results and what that is, in terms of what is that storage capacity versus a runoff, and is there an amount over and above, since we had sixty-seven cubic...sixty-seven thousand cubic feet of storage? So, what is the surge, additional surge capacity in that drainage thing?
So, I'll start high level, Councilman Moss, and I'll hand it to our DSC Administrator, Ms. Bookhold. The way this is designed, it's to handle the...it cannot make the stormwater issue any worse, so since it is a green site right now, they essentially have to hold back the same amount of stormwater or water that the current site can now in its current state. And I'll let Ms. Bookhold kind of give additional information on that.
Before you went on, he went on to say, I thought he said, that they went over and above what the policy implies for the land at its current use, but they went to the proposed higher standard that we have now, I don't know if we've actually officially adopted it or just practicing it, which is that higher rainfall, higher water generation, so which is it?
So, we do require, because we have updated information, that we do require development to follow that standard now. So, I'll hand it over to Ms. Bookhold, in the technical expertise.
Thank you.
So, they did use the higher rainfall total in their analysis, the twenty percent. They used a static tailwater starting point for their analysis from our stormwater models, and our engineers in Development Services Center analyzed the site to make sure that it met pre-development versus post-development, that at post-development, it didn't supply any additional runoff. So, the capacity for the site that was on a hundred-year storm existing now was sixty-one thousand cubic feet of storage. In post-development, they have eighty-seven thousand cubic feet of storage. So, they have a higher amount of storage in the hundred-year storm post-development. So, they are holding that storm on-site and releasing it. The connection point through the 7-11, which will then run through the shopping center, has been throttled back to hold and detain the stormwater system in the underground chambers.
I'm trying to follow that math. So, sixty-one thousand people would have to do no matter what we did, because that was the legacy requirement, is that correct?
Yes.
And you said it was now going to eighty-one thousand?
Eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven thousand. Eighty-seven thousand minus sixty-one thousand doesn't equal sixty-seven thousand cubic feet of additional storage. So, what...I'm trying to reconcile the number given here versus the math we just publicly did, which is always dangerous, but I think we're pretty safe in this case. So, what is the differentiation between that sixty-seven thousand additional cubic feet of storage and the numbers you just shared?
So, I'll provide that background, Mr. Moss. So, the site was previously approved in a site plan for a commercial development, which had a certain design that met requirements prior to our current stormwater requirements. So, I believe the difference Mr. Brandon is stating is that it's from the previous approved design to our current standard now, not necessarily what we would have required previously, or under current standards, and then now, as we add the additional twenty percent.
So, now I'm drawing, trying like a timeshare salesman, trying to find what the real truth is. So, now, if I got it right, is we really aren't getting anything in terms of cubic storage that isn't actually required by the model, and for this development would be permitted, would be required, and in fact, the developer is offering nothing additional in terms of off-site storage over and above what the model requires for the development, correct?
And so, we will...since that has not been...that question has come up, but the applicant has chosen not to, one, challenge us on the requirement. So, we...I can say that we would have required this, and there was a potential for them to challenge it, they had a vested approval through the existing plan. That question has not been answered. All we know at this point is that they are requiring this additional eighty-seven thousand square foot of...not additional, but they're providing eighty-seven thousand square feet of...cubic feet of storage.
Okay, but in the future, I do think it is very helpful, and I think for the public who have used these, to actually get the data table, and to actually get the computation, and actually get the underlying depths of the water, so you can see that in a topographic way, because, you know, we have been burned on these things, and the taxpayers have had to pay the bill, and, you know, they take it on faith, but generally speaking, I'm in the trust-but-verify mode, and so I think we...I'd feel better if we could get better technical executive summaries to understand, to know, under what condition would the system fail and produce more water and overflow? It'd also be...I realize I don't have to build to it, but as we look at some of these studies we're looking at, it would be nice to know, under what conditions, the system fails to perform. That's not their responsibility, because it's a standard they're meeting, but it's good for us to know going forward, when does the system fail?
Understood, sir. Generally speaking, in these type of analyses that are provided by developers, because we are at a preliminary stage, where they have no approval or right given to them yet, it is hard to give that. So, what they do is they normally design to the minimum standard, and that would be, in all honesty, the minimum standard, the higher standard we have now, is typically where they design to, which would be the point of failure. But we...the hard part for us is to understand how we can provide this information that is though very technical, a way that the public and the council members can take in, and we will review that and see how we can provide that information.
If you can't get there, I would do very well with raw data.
Thanks, sir.
Very much.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the table to deny. The vote is open.
By a vote of two to eight, the motion to deny has failed.
Okay, do we need...
Need a motion to approve?
I'd like to move to approve.
We have a motion for approval? And we have a second? Any other discussion on the motion for approval?
One second, we're opening the vote. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Moss?
I'm voting yes, but I did want to support my colleague to my right, and I'm trying to get that out in the open, but I do think it can work, but I did feel compelled to support my district council member on the vote, but I'm voting yes.
Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of nine to one, you have approved the application as submitted.
Okay, thank you. The item has passed. Okay, moving on.
The item was approved.
The item was approved, okay? Okay, we're moving on to ordinances, resolutions, number three, supplement the city's twenty-twenty legislative agenda, deferred from December tenth, twenty nineteen. Item B, to admit this state code ray temporary detention orders requested by Vice Mayor Wood.
We have one speaker, Vincent Smith.
Good evening.
Evening, sir. I'm Vincent Smith. If you don't know, I'm here tonight to support Councilman Woods' resolution for two reasons. First, law should be clear, ambiguities only leave room for interpretation. Second, TDOs tie into pending legislation on the General Assembly's upcoming agenda. Extreme risk protection orders, also known as ERPOs or red flag laws, will rely on existing TDO verbiage to initiate the project...the process of subject evaluation. Pending legislation will further the power of a TDO to unconstitutionally search and seize citizens' property in violation of their Fourth Amendment rights. I oppose ERPOs on the face of the idea, but also believe there is a need in society for efficient TDOs. If a person poses a substantiated risk, certainly take that person into custody and evaluate their mental health, but at that moment, that person is in custody and removed from their property, including any firearms they may own. The need to seize their firearms no longer exists. If they are released from custody, it is because qualified medical personnel have evaluated the subject and deemed them safe to participate in society. Hence, again, no need or cause to seize their firearms. But as Councilman Wood has pointed out, there are ambiguities in the current execution of TDOs, thus overloading our already overloaded and understaffed law enforcement and emergency services personnel with interpretable definitions that do not allow for consistent execution of these processes. The result is a detainment that could far exceed the length of time actually needed to complete the evaluation of a potentially perfectly safe and sane citizen. I urge council to support this resolution, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No other speakers, sir.
No other speakers. Do we have a motion?
Okay.
Okay, motion for any discussion? Vote is open.
By a vote of ten to zero, you've approved the resolution.
Okay, item number four, ordinances to authorize and adopt a revised city council policy rate time limits for speakers at city council meetings requested by Mayor Dyer and Vice Mayor Wood.
The first speaker is Travis Fox. The next speaker will be Michelle Riley.
Welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mayor, Vice Mayor, my purpose tonight is, I believe, echoes similar sentiments in regard to non-agenda items. I'd like to register my appreciation for Mayor Dyer and Vice Mayor Wood's submission of this modification to the existing ordinances. As been witnessed recently, there are occasions, however rare, that members of this community wish to exercise their right to petition their government for a redress of grievances. Sometimes there are more than three petitioners who feel they have something of value to add to the conversation. Sometimes the conversation is more complicated or demands context beyond the limitations of what amounts to nine minutes' worth of speech. On the face of it, I believe that this is a move in the right direction, though I would like to direct a couple of suggestions to Mr. Wood and Mr. Dyer regarding its implementation in practice. Section two-point-three of the City Council Policy Section, which was on page forty-six of the published agenda, under subsection A, states that sixty minutes shall be allotted after the conclusion of the formal session for public comment of non-agenda items. Can you please specify that there shall be sixty minutes available for each separate non-agenda item? I would also like to see some clarification as to how the timekeeping for this sixty minutes will be managed. Will it be a formal ticking clock, counting down from the first speaker, or will it be a little bit more open to the discretion of the mayor or other moderator? I ask these questions for purposes of clarity, and I thank you for your consideration.
Next speaker is Michelle Riley. After Ms. Riley is Reed Greenman.
Welcome.
It's super nice to see all y'all again tonight. Honestly, I don't mean to be ugly, but I don't understand why anybody would want to limit the amount of time that the citizens are allowed to speak. Y'all work for us. I mean, I don't understand it. These are our meetings. Why on earth would anybody even suggest for one second that we would limit the amount of time that people are allowed to speak at these meetings? Y'all talk all the time when y'all are running for office about how much you love public engagement. Excuse me, Ms. Wooton, I don't mean to bore you, but would you mind looking at me? I mean, I'm just saying, this, these are our meetings. This is the time for y'all to hear from us, and then you're going to propose something that limits our time? That is crazy town to me. I don't understand it. I would ask that you please don't do that. We don't always have meetings where there's this many people here. Most of the time, there's hardly anybody at these meetings. And, and when they do show up, y'all play with your phones, you shuffle around papers, you act like you're counting the ceiling tiles. There is no sense in that. We're, I want y'all to listen to us. These are our meetings. Please don't limit us. It's not okay. You can't, you can't campaign on public engagement and then turn right around and say, oh, no, we're going to limit you. That's not right. Please don't do that.
Thank you.
Reed Greenham, and then Tim Wurst.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Attorney, City Council, Acting City Manager. Not only do I echo the sentiments of Michelle, we've had this conversation over and over. Do you understand what a public meeting is? This meeting is our meeting to tell you what we want you to do for us. That's what this is about. So you guys set up a complicated agenda and fill it with whatever, and somebody had the correct foresight years ago to say, well, let's have a kind of a town hall thing where the citizens can come in at least once a month and talk about whatever their issues are on open mic. Well, good on you, but limiting it to sixty minutes is exactly what Michelle said. You're not doing your job. Rarely do we have long meetings go on because of open mic. But the message you're sending is, well, sixty minutes is enough to listen to my constituents. Now, there's also all kinds of details in here. I applaud getting rid of the limitation on three speakers on each issue, which nobody was enforcing anyway, so that's a good thing. But there shouldn't be just twenty speakers. And then I read the details of what you plan to do and say, well, if you didn't get in there, we'll promise you next month you'll be on the list. But there's nothing in the way this is done, it is not ready for you to vote on, that says, I couldn't sign up today for every single open mic. And fill that up and take up all the time, and you'd have no open mic because it's not in your policy. It's not there. I read your packet. But the point isn't the details. The point is, what are you doing? Now, you had a bunch of people come here at open mic and talk about this First Amendment issue, or Second Amendment issue, excuse me, and I'm glad that you listened to them. That's an anomaly. As Michelle said, hardly anybody shows up here at all. But if you are going to make a change in the right direction, this is the change you should be making. Give us the right to tell you, I want my open mic comments on the camera and recorded so the public can hear what I have to say during open mic. If I don't want my private issue that I'm bringing to you during open mic, I will tell you, and then you can divide the speakers up and take them off camera. But the fact that you're not sharing what happens during open mic isn't transparency. And Mayor, I supported you when you ran on making us a more transparent government. I see I'm out of time. I strongly oppose this change. Thank you.
Tim Wurst. And after, after Mr. Wurst is Leonard Johnson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How is everybody? Thank you for being here again tonight, which may be another longer meeting than normal. I also appreciate the idea of not just having three speakers per subject. I think that's a fantastic idea. I like that a lot. But I am also with these other folks that are speaking that, why limit it to sixty minutes? We only do this once a month, and the idea that we would just limit it to sixty minutes seems a little odd, and I don't want to repeat exactly what everybody else said. Mayor Dyer, I love when you say, never fear an educated and informed public. So let us tell you what we think and our ideas and how we feel about what's going on in the city. Don't limit it to sixty minutes. I also talked with a couple of folks in the back about, how often would we ever go over sixty minutes? Not very often, but if it's a topic like tonight or last night, you could see that two- or three-hour meeting, but it's not going to happen very often. And again, it's once a month. Transparency, I campaigned with some of you, and we use that word transparency a ton. So don't limit it now. Let us tell you what we think, how we feel, and what we'd like to see, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Leonard Johnson. And after Mr. Johnson's Andrew Jackson.
Thank you all. My name's Leonard Johnson. I'm not going to repeat what they said. I got a good reason why you should up or limit. You, sometimes you listen, sometimes you don't, sometimes you don't, most of the time you don't care. You're the only man on this county here that talks to me. The rest of you guys, you don't talk to me. Back in March, I went into your office, Mr. Mayor, and I asked to get time with you. I was told, send me an email. I've sent three, and finally gave up because nobody would talk to me. I've tried to talk to you. You don't remember? It was a while back. And you, and you. I got handshakes and greeted. Now you, you, and you, and you are fairly new because I separated for a little while and a lot of things going on, but I'm back. All right? So you guys need to hear from us. You work for us. Don't limit us. Yesterday, you guys said you wanted to start dialogue. You want to talk about things. You got my number. You got my number. You got my number. That's what I handed out was my number. They all have my phone number. Call me. Let's talk. I have no problem talking to any of you guys. Do I, Mr. Jones? I like to talk, and I will talk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Andrew Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council. I guess I would say ditto, but I've been doing this for a while, and I've been here for a while, and I've seen this thing flow one way or the other, but I see that we, the citizens, are losing time. We used to be able to say, okay, if you got three people and they're going to talk on the same thing, maybe we'll just have one person speak for more, and you get ten minutes. I don't know if you want to hear from us. And I think that's important. We may not all agree on what we're going to say when we come up here, and that's okay. That's a good thing. I need to hear somebody that doesn't agree with me, and they need to hear me. But all of you all need to hear me. We need to have enough time for that. And the other issue is that now this thing is on the agenda, you didn't get any input from me whether this ought to change or not. I don't know if you got any input from anybody in the citizens. Why don't we have an input on some of this stuff before it even goes on the agenda? Who makes up this agenda? You don't ask us. We need to be partners in this. Yeah, you work for us, but you also live here, too, and we may think of things that you don't think of. Good ones and bad ones. But let us have input and give us time to give you that input. Is that okay? Now, some of you weren't here last night after you all left, and I kind of got upset. And so I owe this body here an apology for my rudeness. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move approval, and I'd like to make a comment, too.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, that failing. Okay, we had a motion without a second, and I think one of the things we can do is maybe go back to the drawing board. The intent, the primary intent of this was to give speakers a little bit more time, and, you know, Mr. Stiles, we can put you on the spot a little bit, as you are often done, you know, in the discussion, the rationale for, you know, this going forward.
Previously, your policy said that you would listen to only three speakers per subject. We have advised you that that limitation is probably inappropriate based on recent Supreme Court precedent, and therefore the intent was to provide more opportunity for people to speak on a single item than the existing policy provided. So that was the purpose behind the proposed revision.
And I think just going forward in retrospect, you know, the time limit, I think there is merit to the comments about, you know, the time limit that may have been imposed. Now, traditionally, over time, you know, open mic night, we never had a, you know, big time demand, but in certain instances, that is going to happen. But I guess somehow, some way, my recommendation was that, you know, we go along, you know, with the speaker policy and allow more than three speakers, but, you know, and then also keep the open time limit because a certain things are going to come up from time to time. You know, I think, you know, we do have to engage the public, and, yeah, that would be my opinion on that at this point. Okay, but right now, the motion has, you know, failed, and, you know, we'll move on? Okay, now, going forward next, item number six, resolution to support the Ignite Seminar Series and Disparity Forum and transfer three thousand dollars from Opportunity Grant Line of Non-Departmental Budget to Municipal Council Ray Offset Expenses, deferred from August fifteenth, twenty nineteen, requested by Councilmember Wooton.
The first, sorry, stand right here. The first speaker is Sabrina Brown, and the next speaker will be Conrad Shisventer.
Welcome.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I respectfully request that you continue the efforts to support the Ignite Business Series and the Disparity Forum. Both are tools to address the disparity identified by the disparity study. I attended the last seminar, which was held in September. All of the speakers were outstanding. They shared a wealth of information that is essential for entrepreneurs to be successful. As a recent business owner, as I'm recently retired, I, number one, was inspired to start my business, and, number two, received valuable tips ranging from marketing to financing a business to even acquiring government contracts. The seminar featured quality speakers such as CEO Dan the Man of Nissan, Angela Reddicks, founder and CEO of Artix, and retired three-star general Ron Lewis of LTC II Global Consulting. All are successful minorities. What better avenue to inspire minorities and everyone, because there was a mixed audience, in attendance, to go into business and ultimately do business with the city as applicable and feasible? It's good for Virginia Beach. It's good for the Commonwealth. When entrepreneurs win, the city wins. The requested three thousand dollars is a nominal expense item that is well-invested for such a rewarding project. Kudos to the city for your accomplishments via Ignite twenty nineteen. I hope to see it continue by way of your support. Thank you again.
Next speaker is Conrad Shisventer. And after Mr. Shisventer, it's Clarence Neely.
Welcome.
A verb conveys action. They describe what a subject is doing, and I like to look at things optimistically. And in that vein, I take commentary that government should not pick winners and losers in the economy seriously. Balanced. No picking winners and losers can become bad if it involves corruption, if it involves fleecing the taxpayer for a sports stadium, because that picks a winner, the rich developer, and a loser of the taxpayers. If the government can instead instigate dreamers, if it can inspire collective energy to economically benefit communities, then I see it with the better purpose to foster cooperative economics. I say support the Ignite Seminar Series and follow that goal. Thank you.
Clarence Neely. And after Mr. Neely is Regina Harris.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good morning, Mr., good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Vice Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity. Just wanted to say how proud I am of the city of Virginia Beach and how proud of all the accomplishments we accomplished in two thousand nineteen. The Ignite Seminars did something for me that never happened in twenty-four years of business here in Virginia Beach. I started my business in April nineteenth in nineteen ninety-six and have been in business ever since by God's grace. With the Ignite Seminars hosted by Councilwoman Wooton, I learned things I'd never learned in twenty-four years. I didn't know anything about SWAM. I literally knew nothing about SWAM, but it gave me an opportunity, and now my company, both my companies are SWAM certified now. So it's a great opportunity for small businesses to get ahead of the game and compete. So I think that we ought to say yay on the Ignite Series. And we've come, like, in the words of our hero, Pharrell Williams, we've come too far to give up who we are now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Regina Harris, and then Gary McCollum.
God bless you. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Ron Gina Harris, and I am also a small business owner. I am also in the medical industry in the Virginia Beach area. I am a Virginia Beach citizen, and I am here because I am attendee of the Small Business Institute through Ignite. I highly recommend that we continue this program. It is very imperative and is highly needed. From this program, I was able to take my business to another level as far as helping the community, the services that I offer. It helps people to not have to spend so much money on medications. It helps me provide services and remedies to help them with a better holistic life. I'm also able to provide jobs for our community. I was able to get the certifications, be able to teach. I am an instructor. I can get people certified as a medication aide, PCP. I was able to launch my business in the healthcare arena. I recommend this service to continue.
Thank you very much.
Gary McCollum. And after Mr. McCollum, it's Andrew Jackson.
Happy New Year, Mr. Mayor, Council. You know, Saturdays, my wife tends to give me chores, and so if she told me I needed to sweep the floor, mop the floor, and take out the trash, and if she came back home and all I did was wipe off the counter, she would probably say, you know, it's great you wiped off the counter, but I gave you some specific instructions to sweep the floor, mop the floor, and take out the trash. And so I applaud what Sabrina Wooton is doing with Ignite. But there were nine specific recommendations in this study. One of them was to set an aspirational goal, which this council did, I believe, in April. But there were eight other specific recommendations that, to my knowledge, the council hasn't taken action on. And if I may, just in the little bit of time I have, double-click on a couple of them. But one of them, which I think was really critical, was actually funding a SWAM office for the city to actually- to actually have people who would give teeth to this study. To my knowledge, that hasn't been done. The other item that I think, again, is really critical, these were, there were nine recommendations, business certification. Right now, that certification process is handled at the state level. And in that study, as you know, a lot of businesses complained that the state process was too cumbersome and that a city like Virginia Beach, the largest city in the Commonwealth, can and should have its own certification process. Again, I won't go through all nine of these recommendations. All I'm saying to you is, it's great that we're wiping off the counter, but the recommendation went way beyond that. And so I would ask that this not be the only thing you're going to do, but you take it seriously, that we spent, I believe, $750,000 on this study, something like that, of our money. Let's go out and let's do what you heard from the, from the consulting company last year. Let's take this seriously and give teeth to the disparity study. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCollum.
Andrew Jackson. And after Mr. Jackson is Michael Walls.
Welcome back. Good to be back. One of the things that I, I've seen in this city is a slow walk. There's only, no, I'm not going to do that to you, Mr. Jones. I've been here for a while, and I've watched this city grow. I made this city my home when I retired from the military. I came here initially in 1956, went in the military at the end of Korea, got out at the end of Vietnam. This is the place I've made home, and I've been more places than you can name in this world, but this is home. And I've seen it grow. But we've had some problems. We understand what that is. We got through this thing, and we finally got a disparity study done. We got it done. I think everybody agreed it was needed. Now, the issue is, can we do the things that were recommended to us? Can we have, yes, we, we need to do some things with those people that have never had that opportunity before, and that's what her program is. The rest of you all need to make sure the rest of what needs to be done in terms of disparity happens. This is a great diverse city. But in all that we do, we need to include, include all that we have. And that's really the only thing that's necessary. Train where we need to, but get those things in place that will make possible for everyone in this city to grow. We are 95% alike. We need to stop piddling around with the other 5%. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Walls. And after Mr. Walls is Laura Haver.
Good evening, welcome.
My name's Michael Walls. This is my twin brother Edward Walls. We are co-owners of Team Lamb Inc., which is an emerging clothing brand and nonprofit, well, aspiring nonprofit organization here in the 757 area. Our acronym stands for Ta, Everyone Around Me Love All My Brothers. Our experience with the Ignite Business Series has been anything short of awesome. Basically, we've networked with a lot of great officials in the city. They helped us along the way. For 2019, our slogan was "The Year of Lamb," and we definitely fulfilled through that. We owe a lot to, of our success to Mrs., Councilmember Wooten, as well as Councilmember Aaron Rouse. They were very helpful. In our experience, all I could say is, with this group and this Ignite Business Series, all you have to do is ask. Anytime we've asked for any help throughout and even after the Ignite, the Ignite Your Business Series, we've had a response, and we've been in the loop of a lot of great things. And we have a lot of good things coming up for us in 2020 as well. A lot of that is, like I said, with the help of the Ignite Business Series.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Laura Haver.
Welcome, Laura.
Mayor, members of City Council, my name's Laura Woodhoover. I'm a small business owner and resident here in Virginia Beach. And I'm here to urge you to implement all nine recommendations of the disparity study that was completed in October of 2018. The city is in a trying time right now. The disparity study and its implementation should be a top priority. And it should send a positive message that we are open for business to the upstarts and existing businesses to show our inclusivity to all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you all very much. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I move to approve this item.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a second. Open for discussion? The vote is open.
By a vote of nine to one, you've approved the resolution.
Okay, thank you all very much. Appreciate the comment. Okay, moving on. Item number 13, resolution to support a bill, rate allow localities to prohibit the carrying of firearms in governmental buildings, deferred from June 18, 2019, requested by Councilmembers Tower and Wooten.
First speaker is Vincent Smith, and the next speaker will be Philip Van Cleve.
Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. Here we are again. I feel Thomas Jefferson's political philosophy sums up tonight best in the phrase, "That government is best which governs least." Mr. Rouse brought up last night, we're a healing community, and I agree. But we don't all heal lying down. We can also heal standing tall on our feet. We can now decide, it is time to take actions to make our city employees safer. I ask, in the last seven months, what specific steps have been taken to make our employees safer? This resolution, it asks for the city to support legislation in Richmond. What legislation? As of last night, no such bill is filed. Councilmember, a councilmember who argued last night it was meaningless to show opposition to actual filed legislation now wishes to put forth a resolution in support of phantom legislation. It appears only in disapproval over the actions taken last night. We can find better uses of this council's time. Another point, I hear over and over, we need common sense gun control. Many here tonight will state that it already exists in the Second Amendment. Tonight, I'll ask you this. Would you agree that the United States military operates their domestic bases under a common sense ideology? In the wake of several active shooters on military bases in recent years, US Navy Yard in DC, Fort Hood twice, and most recently Pensacola and Pearl Harbor, the DOD now allows, under a set of conditions, service members to carry a personally-owned concealed firearm on military installations for personal protection not associated with the performance of official duties. Common sense, it's right there. It's coming at you hard. More and more, governments are seeing that trying to keep employees safe by restricting firearms in the workplace has not worked. The state of Kansas now requires all public employers that do not provide adequate perimeter security to allow employees to carry a firearm. Kansas State Code 757C20, if you want to look it up. How many active shooters in Kansas public buildings lately? Not a one. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak before you again, and I'll leave you with a quote. "Authority should derive from consent of the governed, not from the threat of force." Any guesses who said that? Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, maybe? That was Barbie in Toy Story 3. A toy gets it, why can't our governor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Van Cleve. Philip Van Cleve. Okay. Uh, the next speaker is Joshua Kellogg. And then the next speaker will be James McCool.
Welcome.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Josh Kellogg, and I am a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach, a retired Navy veteran, as well as a registered and active voter. I'm here to urge you tonight to, not to adopt the resolution supporting a future bill to allow localities to prohibit fire, the carrying of firearms in governmental buildings. The resolution states, quote, "That this bill would enable the city to better protect employees who work in and the city's citizens who visit city buildings. This bill would only serve to disarm a law-abiding citizen. As a private citizen, I have lawfully carried a firearm in several buildings here at the municipal center, including here now as I'm speaking to you, and I have never harmed anyone. That's simply because I'm a law-abiding citizen. Only a law-abiding citizen can be disarmed by the law. Criminals, on the other hand, by definition, do not obey the law. In fact, if there were any truths behind the premise of this resolution, then how has City Council chambers remained so safe in the midst of so many armed citizens and those opposing them passionately discussing one of the most heated issues concerning our city, Commonwealth, and nation on December 3rd, last night, and tonight? We're all safe. On May 31st, 2019, an employee who wasn't allowed to be armed decided to commit mass murder, which is illegal, and attempt the capital murder of law enforcement officers, also illegal, which is in the, in the city or in the state, which is second in the nation in application of the death penalty. He was going to die either by armed resistance or lethal injection. He did not care. But some of our elected officials wasted no time seizing the opportunity to use this tragedy to further their own agenda. In fact, that day, before the police had even cleared Building 2, and long before Chief Sera gave us his first public briefing on the facts, Congressman Laurie was on social media calling for gun control in the name of the tragedy. The resolution before you today is just more of the same. It is an effort to disarm law-abiding citizens in the name of safety. In fact, by creating more places that disarm law-abiding citizens and passing other bills that would abolish the death penalty and reinstitute parole, it will create an environment which is more inviting for criminals and less safe for law-abiding citizens. But the right of the individual to keep and bear arms isn't meant to keep us safe. It's meant to keep us free. Thank you.
James McCool. James McCool. The next speaker is Mike Colbacher. Is there a Mike Colbacher? Thomas Coulson. And after Mr. Coulson is Travis Fox.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to tell my story. My name is Thomas Coulson. I'm a Virginia Beach resident. I'm also employee of the city of Virginia Beach Public Utilities. I am an employee from Building 2. I was there, May 31st. I'm here in opposition of the resolution. I urge to vote against it. Over and over, we know, we see evil people doing evil things. Good people become the victims. But we can change that. We have to stop creating these gun-free zones. We also need to work towards having a program that authorizes city employees to carry a firearm at work. Here's the reason, here's my reason why. On May 31st, I feared for my life. Okay? That morning, I dropped my daughter off at preschool. Before that, my end of work, I was afraid for my life. I had to text the mother of my child, let her know, hey, there's an active shooter. I might not be coming home. You need to go take care of my child. Now, I have, not only was it a living nightmare, I'm still living the nightmare. There are visions and things I just can't get rid of. And here's, here's the thing. I crossed paths with the gunman three times when he was carrying out what he wanted to do. I'm still here, three times. I have been, I have owned a weapon since I got out of the military in 2007. I had a concealed permit when I moved to Carolina. When I moved to Virginia Beach, I did not get a concealed permit. But if I was able to have my weapon, I had three opportunities that I know I could have taken care of him without any collateral damage. The gentleman that I was with barricaded in the room fearing for our lives, not only does he have a concealed permit, he is also a licensed firearm seller. If there's anybody that I would want to have a weapon, it would have been him. You know, we could have, we could have been able to protect ourselves. We could have cut out some of these casualties. I, I just want, you know, when I signed into the military, I knew I could put my life in danger. I knew there was a chance that when I go to work that morning, go to work on my ship that morning, I might not come back home. I, I knew that. When I came to work for the city of Virginia Beach, that never crossed my mind. I was like, okay, I'm, you know, working, work for the city government. I can come to work, I can go home, have no fear. Now, I'm scared. I'm scared. Every time I hear a knock at the door, every time I see somebody walk by the window, I jump. I'm scared to do my job. At my job, I am not safe. I don't feel safe at all. Thank you.
Travis Fox. And the next speaker, after Mr. Fox, is Karen Greenhall.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night was a little cathartic. I got to channel my inner Patrick Henry a little bit. And here I am again. I stood here on June 18th, last year, opposing this same resolution. I stood here last night, and it seems that neither of its sponsors have been bothered to acknowledge their oaths, the investigation, nor the vast majority of the community here present. This resolution is nothing less than an attempt at violating our constitutional rights. I have said it before, and I repeat it today. If you believe that restricting my rights, that by sponsoring or supporting resolutions or ordinances or legislation which limit or infringe upon my rights, in any way, you are unfit for public office. Unfit! At December's regular meeting, and just last night, this facility and its grounds were overflowing with citizens of this community vastly in support of a resolution to declare the city of Virginia Beach a Second Amendment sanctuary. While we did not get exactly what we were looking for, when compared to other municipalities, we did get a promise, we did get a promise from this city's council that they were reaffirming their oath, which included defending and upholding the constitutions of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the United States, and that they would oppose any law which would restrict the rights of law-abiding citizens. Those who voted against the resolution will hopefully reconsider their calling for public service or their vote, at the very least, as they have publicly declared their contempt for the very people and rule of law under which they serve. Either the sponsors of this resolution have very short memories or their interpretation of what is and is not an infringement differ greatly from mine. I am appalled that this resolution has not been withdrawn and equally that the kind of people who would sponsor, sponsor or support it are allowed to keep their office. If you voted yes last night, you must vote no tonight. Thank you.
Karen Greenhall. And then the next speaker is Glenda Craddock.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Karen Starlin Greenhall. I live in Virginia Beach, work in Virginia Beach. In fact, I lived in Hampton Roads my whole life. I was born here when it was still called Tidewater. I am a member of the VCDL, and one thing I wanted to say is, last night, several speakers spoke about VCDL members and implied that they were bullying or intimidating. And VCDL was started by Phil Van Cleve, who's a very nice man. He keeps a close eye on us. The purpose of VCDL is to encourage and empower voters to lobby their legislators, and that's it. He insists that we be civil and polite. There is no bullying or intimidation if allowed, if you're. There is no bullying or intimidation allowed if you're representing VCDL. So, but I am here about your bill. So now you are requesting authority to ban guns in municipal buildings. And I really don't understand the need to restrict the Second Amendment rights. There's no record of gun violence by an armed citizen going into a municipal building. I mean, I don't have to tell you. You all know that it was an employee who was breaking the rules carrying a gun, who was the shooter in Building 2. So there's no logical reason to restrict the gun rights of your citizens. And last night, you voted to stand for the Second Amendment and to discourage the General Assembly from passing laws that would restrict our Second Amendment rights. And so tonight, you are considering encouraging the General Assembly to pass laws that would restrict our Second Amendment rights. There's just no logic there. There's no reason to take this action, and so I'm just asking you to please vote no.
Glenda Craddock. And after Ms. Craddock is Clarence Canterbury.
Hello.
Hello. I feel a lot better than I did last night. You guys are scary, but I'm gonna get through this. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here again this evening to ask you to vote no for Resolution 13, supporting House Bill 421. While I respect anyone's efforts to make the citizens of our city, state, and country safer, I can honestly say, I don't believe there is one thing in it that has any hope of actually deterring crime or criminals. We have an overabundance of gun laws already. Given, I'm sorry, giving cities the ability to increase and create additional layers of codes that would change from city to city only affects the law-abiding citizen who causes no harm. A law-abiding citizen will obey the law and a gun-free zone sign. However, a person intent on doing harm doesn't read the sign and think, hmm, I don't want to break two laws today, so I'll just flip it and go back home. That doesn't happen. He or she forges ahead empowered with the knowledge that he's gonna be the only one in there with a gun. This sense of security people seek isn't found behind a sign. If the shooter on May 31st knew he would face someone with a gun, he may not have done what he did. That's the statistic that we need. How many crimes are prevented every day for fear of the armed citizen? The anti-gun lobby makes citizens out to be intolerant, dangerous, and to quote Senator Sazla, "little children." Interesting, as the law-abiding gun owners he targets are just that, law-abiding, causing no harm. No one bill, including HP 421, will do anything to deter crime. They will only serve to handicap law-abiding citizens. After all, that is what this is really about, the slow disarmament of our state and our nation. I'll leave you with one thought. The unique freedoms granted by us and by our founding fathers are what make our country better than any other in the world. Refugees risk everything to enter our country looking for a better life. Why are there no American refugees? Because we're it. We're the deal. The reason we are the deal is because of our Bill of Rights, our Constitution, and yes, our guns keep us free and our government in check. That is why. If you pass this resolution, congratulations. You may have just wasted time and money on something that has zero hope of stopping violence. Thank you.
And after Mr. Canterbury is Tim Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Once again, we find ourselves here again tonight. My wife's dealing with two small children after a very long, hard day of work, so I appreciate your time. I debated how I was gonna approach this tonight. I'm a retired chief petty officer. I don't know how many of you have previous military experience, but in the Navy, the chief petty officer's job is to speak truth to power. Okay? When we see things are going awry, it is our job to disregard ourselves and our career and tell the truth. Sometimes an uncomfortable truth. Okay? I don't hold any of you accountable for the policy that was on the books that prevented city employees from being armed, May 31st. That policy was probably implemented long before any of you were here. However, we heard from a gentleman tonight, one of your employees that has previous firearms experience, that three times, three times possibly could have stopped that shooter. Once, twice, thrice. What we're discussing tonight is doubling down on that policy that cost innocent lives. From this day forward, if you proceed with this, the blood is on your hands. Okay? I don't hold you accountable for a policy that was put in place likely when none of you were here. But to double down on that policy is sheer insanity. Thank you for your time.
And after Mr. Anderson is Michelle Riley.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I think that the decision has to be tonight, is when you make a decision, does it make the employees or the citizens of Virginia Beach safer? That should be the question that you have to ask. Were the employees in Building 2 safer because of the city's policy that they could not bring firearms to work? Were they safer? When the shooting happened, if someone had been armed and could have responded, would there have been a different outcome? Ask yourselves those real questions. Are gun-free zones safe? Are they safe? Why are there 15 armed police officers outside of these doors today? Do any of you fear the people that are in this room that are armed? Somebody does, because there's 15 police officers out there. But why is that? Why do you fear an armed citizenry? Have any of you been threatened by anybody in this room last night that would cause the police to have 15 armed, in tactical gear, security outside that door? Did any of you feel that way last night? Why are they here? Are they normally here? Do you normally have that kind of security for a council meeting? Are you making your citizens more safe? How is this vote gonna go? Six-four? Well, I guess four-six, because that's what it went last night, right? But I'm expecting something out of you, Mr. Rouse, because you said something last night that I expect you to follow. You said, "I'm not gonna pick sides." Don't pick sides on this. Your vote last night was no, because you said you're not gonna pick sides. So your vote tonight should be opposing this motion. This vote should be three to seven tonight. And if it's not that way, you're playing politics. Don't do it.
And after Ms. Riley is Eric Ray.
Welcome back.
Thank you. It's nice to see y'all. I was listening to the police scanner on May 31st, because sometimes I just like to listen to the police scanner. And I couldn't even believe what I heard. It was awful. I think it broke all of our hearts. And Ms. Henley, when I heard that you were down there that day, even though I don't agree with you on a lot of things, I couldn't stand the thought of you being down there. It bothered me very deeply. I don't want nothing bad to happen to none of y'all. None of y'all. Even if we don't agree, okay? Everybody deserves to be safe. Everybody deserves to protect theirselves. We just had a shooting in Texas. It took six seconds for somebody to take out somebody that was gonna hurt people. Not 10 minutes, six seconds. Our police force is amazing. I have nothing but respect for our police force. We have amazing police officers here in this city. But I'm sorry, I carry a gun because I cannot carry a police officer. Last night, Wooten, Ms. Wooten and Mr. Rouse, y'all both said that you did not think that localities should be making gun laws. But now here you are, saying that we should ban guns in our buildings. Like, so which one is it? I'm a little bit confused about that. You gotta decide. Nothing about not letting people protect themselves is a good idea. Don't you want to be able to protect yourself? Y'all are getting ready to build a Taj Mahal, City Hall, with security doors. Everybody doesn't have that. I mean, I should, I'm a single mother. I should be able to protect myself. The people that go to work every day in these buildings should be able to protect themselves. That's not too much to ask. If there would have been somebody with a firearm in that building, on Building 2, that could have kept those people from dying that day. You know it, I know it. So please, do not pass this. It is not smart. Thank y'all.
And after Mr. Ray is Mark Egman.
Welcome.
Well, welcome. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Jones, and, I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm weary back in the past, Vice Mayor Wood, and the remainder of council. It's been a long time. Just over a week ago, a gunman opened fire in a church, and he's killing two people, and would have undoubtedly killed more, except for the quick action of a citizen with a gun who stopped the shooter with only one shot. Under Texas law, gun owners are allowed to carry in churches if the church permits it. And this is why several others were armed and ready to defend churchgoers if a hero wasn't able to stop him so quickly. And my mind also goes to older people who probably came into the church with a lot of help. Just imagine if the person had a gun, no one had a gun, and those innocent lives would have also been more casualties. And here we are today, considering a ban on citizens' right to bear arms in public buildings. If last Sunday's shooting wasn't enough evidence that tonight's resolution is exactly the wrong direction, then we needn't look any further than what happened in Virginia Beach last May. This resolution is a ban on members of the public exercising their right. But the Virginia Beach shooter, he wasn't a member of the public, he was a city employee. And city regulations already prohibited him from bringing a gun to work. But as we all know, people intent on murder aren't stopped by rules, the ban of them from bringing a gun. Can anyone imagine a shooter approaching a government building, this building, intent on mass murder, saying, and seeing a sign that says, "No guns allowed," and turning around and said, "Man, gosh darn it, disappointed," because his whole plan has been foiled. There is no conversation about enforcing this ban, no cost estimate on security officers, no cost on how we're gonna secure every entrance on every government building in the city, including even cost of detectors. What's the city's plan to enforce this ban, should it be imposed? I don't see one. Have you? I asked the city council to defeat this resolution, which at very least will accomplish absolutely nothing, but more likely will give a false sense of security to its employees, its citizens in our building, who will be prevented from being a hero, like a hero in Texas, because a killer intent on killing will laugh at the "No Guns Lost Sign" as he approaches unarmed victims, looking at them like sitting ducks.
And then WH Agar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Happy New Year. We're back here again tonight, and I want to say, first of all, thank you for your work yesterday, last night, and I know it was a long evening. I think each and every one of you probably deserved some kind of a Iron Bottom Endurance Marathon award, but, you know, here we are, back, and we're repeating much of what was discussed last night. And so, in the interest of brevity, I'm going to concede most of my points to what has already been discussed. I'm not gonna repeat those points. I am going to bring up one item that I've not heard discussed yet. 15.2-915 of the Code of Virginia is what we call the preemption law. It prevents local jurisdictions from creating laws that are not compatible with state law regarding possession, transportation, everything else of firearms. And we have that law for a very good reason. It creates a uniform standard throughout the Commonwealth to make everything the same, just like building codes are standard throughout the Commonwealth, it's to everybody's benefit. I remember the days before we had that, and you would drive down the street, you could be legal where you were, but because you drove over some invisible line on the road, now you're creating a misdemeanor in somebody else's jurisdiction. So, it's this kind of thing that we actually need to keep up, and a resolution like that is going to, would be as it stands right now, in violation of the state preemption code. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then Leonard Johnson will be the next speaker.
Will Agar, Prince Anne County native, for what it's worth. Navy veteran, for what it's worth. Came here to show my opposition to this proposal, and also, in case anybody didn't see my email, I'll read it to you. Common-sense people love to wave the bloody shirt, but I could wave it too. One of my sisters was murdered in a holdup. She worked at the Gulf Magic Mart at Eckerdale. She was a store clerk. She refused to prepare for the possibility that she might be robbed. She also chose to place her life in the hands of strangers, one of whom did not value human life. She made her choices, and she paid the consequences. But to impose those choices on others is criminal. Gun-free zones are the antithesis of common sense. They are part of a philosophy that has repeatedly failed to work in the real world. Oh, let's just try more laws. We can change the world if we're out more laws. They create killing pens full of unarmed victims. City policy created the circumstances where a killer could run them up through the Ops Building, Building 2. To impose those same circumstances on the general public is insane. And one last thing, if you really want reform, you will oppose this proposal and abolish the city policy concerning its employees.
And after Mr. Johnson is Jimmy Frost.
Welcome back.
Thank you. By now, you guys probably know who I am. I'm not gonna hit those points that those folks have already hit, because it wouldn't make sense. So, it's interesting to see that some of you are just not capable of learning. I mean, look what happened less than a year ago, and then you come up with this. Amazing how this works, isn't it? So, you want common sense? Get a dictionary, read the Constitution of the United States, and focus on the Second Amendment. It's pretty clear when you can define each word as you go along. It'll help you out. I wasn't there in that mass shooting. I was in no mass shooting. I wasn't even close. I was at home. I've been in that building many a times. As some of you know, I was a member of the Wetlands Board and spent some time in there. I have a neighbor in there. I have friends that are in that building when this happened. And my heart sunk, because if it was a Wetlands Board day, I'd have been there, buddy, and I'd have dropped somebody. Because I don't fear saving my fellow friends, law-abiding citizens, people I don't know. We've gotta protect each other. This law that you guys come up with is crazy. You wanna know why I carry? I'll tell you why I carry. I used to live in Norfolk. In my front yard, my house, I was held at gunpoint with punks threatening to kill me. And I went like this, and I had nothing. And alls I could do was beg for my life. Police station, two blocks from my house, two blocks. You know how long it took the police to get there? Thirty-plus minutes. Two blocks. Wow, amazing. How close was the police station to Building 2? Pretty damn close. Still took a long time for them to get there when your life is on the line. I'm not gonna inject myself into anybody's shoes that have been through that. I haven't been through that, but I've been close. I'm not like some of the members on city council that want to claim to be somewhere. I asked you, were you in Building 2? I didn't think so. When you were senior in Virginia Tech, were you in the building? I didn't think so. Please do not insult this gentleman right here who lived through that by thinking you lived through it. There are plenty of people here that would have gone to that location to hug those people and give them support if they were allowed. They weren't allowed. You happen to be city council, you could go. So don't inject yourself into their shoes. You don't know what they've been through, you don't know what I've been through. And I'm not gonna give up my family's safety for nobody. They can pass whatever law they want. I will not comply. Some of you know where I live. Come on. Come on, I will not comply!
Jimmy Frost, and after Mr. Frost is Carl Kendrick.
Good evening. I can't say what was going through the mind of the Building Two assailant. I'm confident in the assumption.
Can we start, Mr. Rogers?
Start again.
I can't say what was going through the mind of the Building Two assailant. I'm confident in the assumption, he knew full well that he was planning something that would violate volumes of policies as well as laws, and he just didn't care. Can someone anywhere say with confidence when or even if these policies or laws ever deterred this or indeed anyone intent on doing harm? You can't, because they don't, and on May thirty-first, they didn't. I'm also sure the assailant knew it was unlikely his intended victims would be armed. So to even suggest another prohibition brought forth by another politician would be anything more than a complete waste of time is to insult the intelligence of anyone who can read and understand Dr. Seuss. Tragic as they all are, there's one common factor in all these mass shootings, as well as other gun-related crimes, whether they are carefully planned or crimes of opportunity. The criminal counted on the inability of their victim to fight back on equal terms. This is why police stations or gun stores are usually aren't targeted, because criminals know. People in these locations have guns, will shoot back, and good marksmanship is frequently practiced and rewarded. This lapel sticker, many, including myself, are wearing tonight, makes a very simple statement. Guns save lives. One victim of Building Two knew and understood that to be true. She also gave serious consideration to putting her job at risk just to have the chance at saving her own life. I dare say she also knew policies or laws printed on paper wouldn't protect or save her. Some could make the argument her compliance with city policy is the very thing that cost her her life, and therein lies the real tragedy. You all know what I do for a living and how long I've been at it, so allow me to pay you the compliment of being entirely candid in my analysis of what's happening here, as though I were one of your campaign staff or running your campaign. A meaningful legislative proposal usually has some achievable and tangible goals with an eye towards solving a real problem. This proposal has neither, they're just more words on paper. This proposal is a garden variety effort to raise a politician's name ID in the eye of the voters, a proposal that has zero chance of stopping crime. Look at me, I brought you more words on paper. So please, don't buy into false hope, don't try to sell us false hope, and stop using tragic events to advance political fortunes, and just admit what most already know. We don't have any real ideas to achieve the objectives of reducing gun violence, and these meaningless proposals are a waste of everyone's time. Failing that, perhaps we should look to Texas as our example, because they found a way to solve this problem in just six seconds. Yippee ki-yay!
Carl Kendrick, and then Timothy Colhane.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council Mayor, uh, council members and Mayor. Uh, when I stated last night that I was making my first stand to keep and bear arms, I really didn't know I was going to be here again within twenty-four hours, but here we are. City of Virginia Beach is still watching, the state is still watching, the country's still watching, and the world is still watching what's taking place in our city and across the state. And so I want to be clear that when history is written, let's talk about last night, and let history show that the last names of Abbott, Berlucci, Moss, Dyer, Wilson, and Wood stood with their citizens and did their part to protect and represent the citizens of Virginia Beach in their time of need against tyrannical overreach. Your affirmative votes last night took courage and conviction. Unfortunately, I'm here again tonight, because I have to ask you to repeat that same courage and conviction. Equally, no matter what wordcraft they attempted to use last night, the fact is, the names Henley, Jones, Rouse, and Wooton voted against the Constitution. Towers not here, I would have covered him. I don't have enough time for him. That cannot be disguised. Ms. Wooton, who I watched outside on television, made so many troubling comments after I left these chambers, I can't get to them all tonight. I don't have enough time to cover all of her comments, but the resolution before you is why I'm here. This evening, this resolution will have no impact on a criminal. Mayor Dyer, I'm thankful that last June, you exercised sound judgment throughout this process, just as you did last night and after the tragedy. Had you not exercised that judgment and allowed this council to act hastily, the entanglement and crossover of laws being proposed and against these citizens will be impossible to navigate for a law-abiding citizen and create havoc, even for those who try, and even the, even those like me who are up to speed as to what's going on. As the meeting started last night, a new proposal on Richmond was introduced that would make it a crime to leave your weapon in your vehicle, even if locked in your glove box. Think about that. If Ms. Wooton's proposal passes tonight, your own city employees, who you've heard from, who are disarmed coming into this building, can't even safely put their weapon in their vehicle without facing criminal penalties and a fine of up to twenty-five hundred dollars. It makes no sense. Further, so would every visitor to the DMV, which I am one downstairs, would once again make a law-abiding citizen a criminal. None of this makes any sense, and I'm at a loss for words. It makes zero sense to think that criminals care about your laws. Instead, I would argue that this council has never had a more safe meeting than you had last night, and one that you, and like you're having tonight. I think the crim, I'm out of time, so I didn't get a chance to properly thank you for your, your time last night, uh, when I ran short, so thank you very much for all of your councilmen. Even if we do disagree, thank you for listening.
Timothy Colhane, and then Jacob Swab.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Uh, I have nothing prepared, because the mood struck me today, and I said, "I need to come up here and tell you from my heart what I'm feeling." Ms. Wooton, I know you've taken a beating tonight, but I do want to tell you, even though I'm standing here vehemently opposed to your resolution, I do respect the fact that you understand that this is a life and death decision that we're making here tonight. And I thank you for understanding that. I'm just here to tell you why I'm opposed to it. The victim myself, of an armed robbery, I began carrying a weapon many years ago, decades ago. I used to carry openly. Unlike some people are saying here recently, it was never to intimidate anyone. It was purely because I thought it was what I needed to do to protect myself, totally selfish. Then I saw people were upset with it, they would get scared in stores, so I got my concealed permit. For the last dozen years or so, I've carried concealed almost every single day. Anywhere I can, everywhere I can. If I'm not allowed to legally carry there, I avoid a place like a plague. I began to realize, when I saw shootings in the news, that there weren't a ton of people like me, like I thought there was. And I realized what a great responsibility carrying that weapon became. And I trained, and I learned, and I practiced, and I steeled myself to the idea that someday I may have to protect other people, and I'm okay with that. God forbid I ever have to, I damn sure don't want to. But if I have to, I beg of you, do not handcuff me further from being able to do that for my community. If not for me, if not for these people here, I leave you with one question. Do you have enough regard for yourselves and for the people that love you and would mourn for you to allow someone like me, or people like me, to at least try and help in a tragic situation? Thank you for your time.
Jacob Swab, and then Anissa Haran, and then Sabrina Brown.
Welcome.
Welcome to city council. So, I'm from Maryland. We are pretty much a gun-free zone in the whole state, so I'm here to tell you all what gun-free zones do to y'all. I've made Virginia Beach my home, I'm proud to be here. So, I'm gonna tell you, we have what is referred to as common sense gun control, and I can tell you right now, it's ineffective. And, uh, I don't want to see the Commonwealth end up like that. I don't want to see Virginia Beach be like that, because people like Ms. Wooton, and I'm sorry to call you out like this, but you reintroduced this bill from June. Uh, Governor Northam and Dick Sasselaw, and other so-called representatives, who aren't representing the people, are, uh, proposing this legislation that would turn us into felons for protecting ourselves. These don't reduce crimes. If you look closely at Baltimore, the largest city in my home state, uh, the murder rate keeps rising, and it's a gun-free zone in the whole state. It's a gun-free zone in Baltimore. It's not doing anything. Uh, in other words, the law's failed. Instead, law-abiding citizens are impacted, and the crime and murder rate increased. Um, we can all look and see that's a massive failure, so... Well, shoot, I just kind of choked up. Um, I, I actually wasn't prepared to do this. Um, tried to write a speech for y'all. Um, so, shoot. Hold up, I'm gonna get my Baron. So I watched, I watched my home county, Charles County, I watched the murder rate, I watched the crime rate increase there as well, when we became pretty much a gun-free zone. Um, like I said, it's ineffective. Now, let me ask y'all, if you had the opportunity to defend yourself, would you take it? Would you? See, all these people, we understand. We'd put down our lives to defend all of y'all. I can't even do that, because the government says I can't buy a pistol, because I ain't twenty-one. But yet I'm up here preaching that I want to defend our rights. I want to defend me, I want to defend y'all, I want to defend my family. Seconds count. The average mass shooting lasts ten minutes. The average police response time is eighteen minutes. Got that from the National Sheriff's Association. I know all about this stuff, my father's a law enforcement officer. So, I've heard the horror stories, I know what happens. I know y'all are gonna do what's right. Thank you.
Anissa Haran. Mrs. Haran. Sabrina Brown. And after Ms. Brown's, Conrad Shisventer.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me back. Freedom of speech is a principle that supports the freedom of an individual or a community to articulate their opinions and ideals without fear of retaliation, censorship, or legal sanction. Each of you, by way of being elected, are fit to serve. The public places where state laws are preempted by federal law and no guns are allowed are federal court facilities, United States post offices, federal prisons, ranger stations and visitor centers, in any national forest or wilderness area, national cemeteries, and aircrafts. While I support the resolution to support a bill to allow localities, localities to prohibit the carrying of firearms in governmental buildings, I support it only with a plan to prevent firearms from being admitted, such as the security check-in process at federal courthouses. My cousin was murdered by way of gun violence. I have been personally touched by it. While I too am concerned, seriously concerned about being defenseless, I am more concerned about what could happen with guns freely being allowed in the workplace. We are assuming that all coworkers are incapable of committing such a crime. I leave you with an excerpt from a Springer Link article published in March of 2019. There were one thousand five hundred and fifty-three firearm workplace homicides during the study period. Robbery crime trended downward from 2011 to 2015. In contrast, non-robbery crimes constituted almost fifty percent of the homicides and trended upward in recent years. Customers and coworkers were the most frequent perpetrators of non-robbery crimes, most after an argument. While customers and coworkers who commit these crimes were often armed at the time of argument, some were not and retrieved a firearm from an unspecified location before committing a homicide. Thus, immediate and ready firearm access was commonly observed in argumentative workplace deaths. Conclusions: Limiting firearm access in the workplace is a possible measure for preventing deadly workplace violence, and should be considered as part of a comprehensive, that's the key word, comprehensive strategy for addressing this re-emerging public health concern.
Thank you.
Conrad Shisventer, and after Mr. Shisventer is Michael Spear, and then Reed Greenham.
Welcome back.
To my knowledge, HB twenty-one, uh, four twenty-one is proposed by Delegate Price in the peninsula. And do I believe this resolution will pass? No, last night was kind of obvious. Um, do I like it being considered? Kind of. It would definitely change things, and if the enforcement arm of such a resolution to ban guns in municipal buildings and all those security checks therein were considered and passed in January of 2019, well, something to think about. I'll say another thing I'm thinking of. We're in a municipal building, one that had freely allowed private guns in it last night, and tonight too. And I had a councilwoman voicing her opinion, was aggressively talked over as if she wasn't equal to them, in a crowd where some stated that supporting Richmond gun laws will mean blood is on their hands. Yeah, I'm thinking of the many layers to that onion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Spear. After Mr. Spears, Reed Greenham, and then James Takeberry. Takeberry, sorry.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Um, I'm a depart, um, excuse me, I'm a Department of Defense contractor for the Department of the Navy. Every day I get to go to work and support those risking their lives to defend my right to stand here before you today. Um, that's a blessing for me. Um, on the topic of gun-free zones, they create what the military and the Department of Homeland Security refer to as a soft target. A soft target is defined as a person or thing that is relatively unprotected or vulnerable, especially to military or terrorist attack. The terroristic act of committing a mass shooting primarily occurs in gun-free zones. The creation of more gun-free zones generates more soft targets for mass shooters, and inherently creates an advantage for the bad guy, as well as a disadvantage for myself, the good guy. I implore you to oppose item I thirteen, thank you.
Reed Greenham, James Takeberry, and Terry Centauri.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer.
Welcome back.
Members of the city council. I got better things to do than be here. Um, I encourage you to vote no to this. Sabrina, you're just dead wrong on this issue, and so are you, Aaron. But this is a procedural thing. You're not even prepared to vote on this. What bill are you talking about? I went through your packet, you're not talking about any particular bill. Vincent Smith got up here and told you Phantom Bill? This is a blank check, Sabrina. Your resolution says any bill that would enable the city to better protect their employees, which you know is false, and then authorize localities to adopt an ordinance to prohibit firearms, ammunition components, blah, 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 in any government building or used by the government. However, you heard tonight someone bring up the topic of House Bill four twenty-one, which this would apply as an endorsement. Have any of you actually read the bill? By show of hands, have you read House Bill four twenty-one? You guys aren't going to answer that question. Yet you want to pass a resolution supporting a bill you haven't read. Are you nuts? Where's the due diligence in that? Mr. Moss, earlier tonight, you said "trust but verify" while you were talking about a land use. Trust but verify is exactly what every one of you with your fiduciary responsibility should be doing, not putting forth resolutions for nonexistent legislation. The bill that Glenn Davis wrote and Delegate Fowler co-patron during the special session is not filed. Neither Delegate Fowler or Glenn Davis have filed any bill about what you were talking about. That bill is gone, Sabrina. So what are you doing? On the very face of this, you need to reject this, because you're giving a blank check to legislation you haven't read. And if you do read House Bill four twenty-one, wait till you see what it says. It's authorizing you to rule firearms out anywhere in Virginia Beach, or carrying them, or possession, or sale of them, to sue gun manufacturers. That's what you would be endorsing with this blank check, because it's giving a free ride to say that you're endorsing- ride to say that you're endorsing to Richmond crap legislation like that? This is ridiculous. You guys can do better. Thank you.
Thanks, Takeberry. Terry Centauri. And then Sean Flatley.
Welcome.
My wife works in a gun-free zone. Um, and to be honest with you, that scares, scares me every day. But she is, by my opinion, the world's best teacher, so I have to get over it. Um, I don't think gun-free zones are common, common sense, whatever that is. My father always told me growing up, common sense is not so common anymore. Um, but I do feel a little bit better after last night with the majority vote. Uh, if that is a relationship with tonight, then everybody should rest easy. It makes me feel a lot better, is all I have to say. Thank you.
Terry Centauri. Sean Flatley. And then Robert Dean.
Welcome.
Hey, thank you. Six months ago, when this was first brought up, Ms. Wooten, she said that your council should be in a hurry to vote for this because Richmond was in a hurry. And last night, we had a proposal, and she said we should wait and think about it. And, and I hope six months is enough to get people from the other side of the, of the subject, you know, time enough to get in here and speak. And, uh, I congratulate you on your personal growth and your newfound patience. And I'd just like to say, a lot's been talked about that church in Texas and about how fast the problem got solved. One thing I haven't heard people mention that I've seen that I liked was, there was a problem. The problem was solved with one shot. Several other people drew weapons, and as soon as the problem was over, just so there would be no confusion, all those weapons were put away in short order. And, um, and, um, I'd also like to mention that some people want to blame availability of weapons. You know, some people would, uh, would blame Cain for killing Abel with a rock because he grabbed the rock and he used it. Other people would blame God for making the rock. You know, I'm not in that camp. You know, another thought? The people who helped Anne Frank were break, were breaking the law, and the people who killed Anne Frank were obeying it. Lastly, if people can take your weapons away from you, there just really ain't anything else that, that can't be taken from you. Thank you.
Sean Flatley. Robert Dean. And Gary Richards.
Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sean Flatley. I am a resident of Virginia Beach. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I work 40-plus hours every day in the city of Portsmouth. I own property in the city of Suffolk. I'm a lot of cities, a lot of the time. And I'm not gonna come at this from the whether or not a gun-free zone is safer or less safe than a non-gun-free zone, right? What I'm looking at is the ability for the localities to independently and apart from each other, set different laws wherever I'm going to be traveling on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. Uh, what I do know a gun-free zone does is makes me make a decision, okay? If I carry in a part of my everyday life legally, right, I now need to make a decision where I'm going to go. And if I have to go to a place where I'm not allowed to carry, then I have another decision to make. Do I leave this firearm at home? Do I leave it in a car, unattended, while I go in and do my business in such localities? Or do I break the law and take it into that place, right? So, that's not a decision I want to have to make. On top of that, I now don't know what localities have made what laws, and it's very hard for me to track, right? I don't know if I'm going to the city of Portsmouth courthouse or court buildings versus Virginia Beach versus the city of Suffolk. I don't know. I don't want you to be able to put me in that position. So, on that note, I urge you to oppose this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, Robert, Robert Dean. After Mr. Dean is Gary Richards. And then Jeffrey Cannon, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have the opportunity, just to preface, before I preface my remarks with the fact that I would like to thank, uh, our acting city manager, Mr. Lay, yourself, Mr. Mayor, and the Vice Mayor, and of course, Councilman Moss, on your accommodations yesterday, Mr. Lay, allowing us to put the whole rally together, uh, without stopping a lot of the, uh, the ability for the people outside to hear. And it was, it was a wonderful experience. Thanks for the restoration, Phil. On this proposed resolution submitted by Mrs. Wooten, I would like to ask just a few simple questions. One, will this ordinance ensure that I will not be shot in a public building? And if not, why not? Will this ordinance stop someone from attacking me on my way into or leaving from a public building? Will there be police officers' metal detectors located at every public building? And will those buildings be retrofitted to only having one access as the ingress and egress? If the ingress and egress will be limited, how will that affect the public safety in the event of a fire? I'm sure sponsoring council members Wooten and Tower have requested from staff the cost of these restrictions on beach taxpayers in the form of tax increases. I can't imagine this resolution was being introduced without a projected cost. That would be totally foolish and irresponsible. Where can we, the taxpayers, download a copy of the study showing the compelling data that this proposal is financially feasible? One hours of operation would be established restricting citizens from self-protection. How many buildings would be impacted, both city-owned and leased? How many total officers would be required to staff every city building? What will be the cost of hiring additional officers to cover the restroom and meal breaks? Mrs. Wooten, my father served 32 years in the United States Marine Corps, setting the standards for the following path of service for myself, both my brothers, and my uncle. We have a combined 73 years of service to my Corps. Four Purple Hearts, one Bronze Star for Valor on Iwo Jima. I have a squeaky clean record, having committed no crimes. I have a concealed carry permit with no violations, so with your initiative, you are removing my ability to protect myself from someone trying to harm me. I find this proposal outrageous and totally unacceptable as a citizen of the city I've called home longer than you have been alive. I would suggest that you withdraw your submission of this resolution and simply walk away from this nonsense. It insults me as an American who believes in protecting myself under the self-responsibility and self-protection doctrine. You, Mrs. Wooten, put my life in danger when you try to take away my right to defend myself. Shame on you.
Gary Richards. Jeffrey Cannon. And John Abernathy.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council. My name's Gary Richards. I'm a retired hospital corpsman. Uh, 22 years of service have called Virginia Beach my home since I retired in 1999. I rise in opposition to this motion, uh, the resolution, and my concern is that it will make me less safe when I come here to pay my water bill. Uh, in my opinion, it'll make, uh, this building a gun-free zone and make it a target-rich environment for the crazies and the terrorists. This is not a safe world that we live in. I don't have to preach to y'all about that. Just let that sit. We, our community has some experience with that here. Where do I want to go from here? Another concern is, uh, when I was walking with the Marines, I found out very quickly that the best weapon you have to defend yourself with is the one you have with you. Not carrying a weapon will make me less safe. Another thing is, a lot of people have to keep their weapons in cars. We all want to keep, uh, guns out of the hands of the bad guys. Many, many weapons are stolen from cars, and we want to stop that. But this resolution would encourage and make this place a target and make those cars a target for the bad guys. So, I appreciate your patience, and I really appreciate your endurance. It's been a long couple of days. Thank you very much.
Jeffrey Cannon. John Abernathy. And then Neil Smith. Jeffrey Cannon.
Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, a little nervous. Last time I spoke, uh, before elected officials was as the liaison for the Just Say No Club, uh, you know, for the youth, uh, to the elected officials, uh, growing up here in the city of Virginia Beach. Uh, thank all you guys for, you know, all of your time, uh, you know, during the last, you know, several days, I guess, the last year or so, uh, given all the events that occurred and, uh, you know, the topics that have been discussed. Um, during, during my time as a liaison with the Just Say No Club, uh, I developed a relationship with Myra Ordor. Uh, I wanted to impress upon you guys her personability, personability, um, her willingness to listen to every citizen, her understanding that she worked for every citizen. Um, and if I could just take a few moments in my time and ask all the chambers to join me in a moment of silence in respect of, uh, Mrs. Ordor. All right, thank you. Um, and moving on, uh, off, away from this here, since I'd like to thank all the women of the council as well. Um, it's only been about 100, 100 years since women could even vote, and now here you sit before us, uh, serving and, you know, serving the community. Um, and as it directly relates to my position up here, uh, to the, you know, the proposed resolution, uh, I'm very much against it. I, I descend from a family line that's been in Virginia since the 1600s on both sides of my family. Um, I think back, Mrs. Henley, uh, I think back to people like, uh, Mr. Henry Barnes Woodhouse, and he was the militia representative of Princeess Anne County. And I think about what he would have considered, um, given the last few days events and what he would have want, what message he would have wanted sent to Richmond. Um, and, and during his, you know, experience and then forging through this pathway of freedom that we all live. Um, beyond that, Ms. Wooten, I respect, uh, everything you do. I very much obviously disagree with you, although I respect your willingness to do something, often, you know, elected officials are looked at, uh, as, as do-nothings. I respect the idea that you wish to do something. I respect you for that. Uh, Mr. Rouse, we're all gonna be friends, and I feel pretty confident of that. I mean, I grew up here in Virginia Beach, you know, uh, you know, sort of the vibe, if you would, that Virginia Beach carries. There's something in the water here, you know? Um, we all know that. Uh, thank everyone, um, and I pray for peace that passes all understanding.
Thank you.
John Abernathy. Neil Smith. And then Tim Worst.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Here I am again, and I'll ask all of you again, why are we here? This is a no-brainer. And I cannot believe that as a educated community and, and city such as ours, that we would even be discussing something like this. I want to backtrack a little bit first and thank you that voted last night in the affirmative and upholding your constitutional and sworn oath for the city and for the job that you're doing here. Thank you for that. For those, please, thank you, I'm serious. Y'all take it on the chin a lot. I understand that, but that's part of the job. I've been in the diving community for over almost 40 years now. When I jump in the water, I'm taking a chance that there's gonna be something down that I don't like. That's the job, that's the chance I take. But when I make that decision, I make it with everything in mind. I don't just throw out a blank something out there and let somebody bite on it. What you have put out, Ms. Wooten, Mr. Rouse, uh, I think it was Tower, was all signed onto that, it's beyond my comprehension. And I'm not the sharpest tool in the shed, but you don't want to take the guns away from free people. This, it's just crazy. Why would you even, this sounds like something that Ralph Nordeman would come up, come up with. Did he send it to you? Are, are you in cahoots with him and, and his cronies up there and Bloomberg? I don't believe that this is even up for discussion after everything that's happened the last five, six weeks and after what all the people went through that was here last night. Resolution to support, why would you want to support such a, such a bill? Such a, uh, uh, yeah, such a bill? Um, I, I, I just had a loss for words now, I guess. I just don't understand it. Um, but once I, one thing I did say last night that I will repeat, if you can't uphold your, your obligations to the city, to the state, clear your desk out. Go find another job. You're not needed here, you're not wanted here. We're paying you a good salary to do what the people are asking you to do, do what's right, and to void our Constitution and our rights, the state and federal, that's a bore. It should not be happening. We should not be talking about this. But again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Neil Smith. Tim Worst. And then Sandy Frazier.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and the rest of the council. I want to thank you, uh, for your time yesterday and well into the evening. I was raised in Virginia Beach, graduated from Greenwood High School. Uh, my employer is based in Virginia Beach, and my wife is also employed in Virginia Beach. My mother works in Building 6. Do you know what was going through my mind on May 31 and every day since? Back on my 21st birthday, I went over here into Building 11 and applied for my concealed handgun permit. I've been carrying now for more than half my life, so I guess you can tell where I stand on the carry issue. Not only do I absolutely oppose gun-free zones, I believe that city employees should be allowed to carry if they choose so, so that they are able to ensure their own safety on their workplace, in their travels, parking lots, and wherever else they may stop on their way home from work. Please vote against this resolution. Thank you.
Tim Worst. Sandy Frazier. And then Darrell Edwards.
Good evening again. Uh, last night, you heard dozens of times about the Texas incident in the church. Uh, tonight, you've heard it a few times, and that's a good example of what could happen here. You have two gentlemen in the front row who were in Building 2 on May 31 that could have been armed. Two great examples, these gentlemen and the Texas incident last week. I have coached dozens of young girls from eight years old up to 16 years old, basketball, softball. And I say, live and learn all the time, and I learn the hard way sometimes. But we can live and we can learn from these gentlemen and from the Texas event, and I hope that we do that tonight with your vote. Prohibiting firearms from city buildings will only mean that bad guys or girls get in the building with guns, because the good guys follow laws. I made a note for myself to tell you that to defer this tonight is cowardly. And I've been to enough of these meetings where we defer things, so I wanted to point that out. And lastly, and I'm glad this happens for you, by the city's best, these guys and women in blue that we have with us, when you leave tonight, when our city council members leave tonight, you are ushered, guided, watched, all the way out with a man or a woman with a gun. Thank you very much.
Sandy Frazier. Darrell Edwards. And then Gil Garcia.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Sandy Fraser. I went to high school here, left here in '69 to go up to Northern Virginia, very familiar with Prince William County. And they're gutless way to change their meeting to 2:00 PM so people couldn't attend. And I've been back here a little over four years because I always considered this my home. I was a military brat, if you want to call it that, but this always felt like home and I always wanted to come back here. I am definitely opposed to this, I will tell you right now. It just doesn't make any sense. Why in the world would you leave citizens defenseless? It sounds good on the surface, but as everybody has spoken, especially these two gentlemen who were in that building on May 31, come on, if that doesn't, if that doesn't make you think that you shouldn't oppose this, I don't know what will. I am, I wouldn't even know what to say, honestly. I appreciate you all being here and taking the extra time. I was here last night. I stood out in the cold for hours listening, and we've got to send a message to Richmond, Northam. He's got to go. I'm sorry, I'm just, I am, I don't know, I'm very patriotic. I love my country, and I just can't believe that we are discussing something that leaves God fearing. Citizens who respect the law, turning them into felons, are making them defenseless against the enemy. Thank you.
Darryl Edwards, Gil Garcia, and then Diana Howard.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening. I was here last night, stood outside at Rose. Tonight I came and I'm really sweating because I dressed like I was going to stand outside. But I'm going to make it real short. I'm not here to point fingers. I want to thank you all, your time of sitting here and listening to everybody. Not to point fingers, just a little teeny bit of history. Last time, somebody came and tried to take guns, the people fought back. They wrote the Constitution. We haven't had another country come try to do anything here. Why? Because they were afraid of armed citizens. The fear of the unknown, who's got one and who doesn't, makes people think twice. That's all's I got to say. Thank you very much.
Gil Garcia, Diana Howard, and then Dana Cottle.
Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Good to see you here. Little bit late on this, but Merry Christmas, and I hope you all have a blessed and safe New Year and prosperous also, although for some more than others. All righty. I've listened to all the arguments and everybody that's come up to the dais and had their say with regard to prohibiting carrying of firearms in governmental buildings. This is a policy that I would never support, you know. We have had shootings, we've had violence, we've had all kinds of things occur. Much has been made, rightfully, of the shooting that occurred here in Building 2. There's a lot of speculation whether people could do something, people couldn't do something, whatever. We've seen actions in Texas and other states where a good guy did stop something with somebody, a bad guy with a gun. However, you're looking at all that, I have to ask, people who would prohibit free men and women into a governmental office with a firearm, I look at this from the perspective that I am a free man. This is why I carry a sidearm. If I do not carry a sidearm or support Second Amendment or what our government is given by the grace of God, I'm subject, subject to what you all want, which may not necessarily mean in my best interest. For those who would stand with disarming a free man, I have to wonder, why? Do you fear me? Is there fear in your eyes toward me because I think differently? Or that I'm willing to defend myself and the office which you occupy? Do you trust me? Obviously, you don't. We have a lot of people here carrying firearms lawfully, who have trained, have experience, either law enforcement experience, military experience, or just experience with the firearms. But that, by doing this, you're telling me that you do not trust me. I am not worthy of your trust, you know? And that's disturbing. Do you have faith in me? Do you have faith that I won't do the wrong thing, that I am a good guy? By supporting this, you're telling me that you have no faith in me? And for those reasons, I'd have to ask, do I have faith in you to do the right thing? Should I trust you to do the right thing? By supporting this, the answer is obviously no. Thank you.
Diana Howard, Dana Cottle, and Omar Pickron.
Welcome.
Good evening. Nice to be back up here again. So I've heard the mayor say this many times, that we are the number-one safest city of our size in the United States. So I looked it up today, and we are. We were voted again the number-one safest city in the United States by SafeWise November 22nd, I think it was, 2019. And that's despite having that tragedy here. So obviously, you know, is it because we have the most wonderful police force here? Well-trained, so well-trained that they're stolen from other cities, they take them away from us, and we're short police officers because of that? Is it just because we're just such great people, we don't have that much crime here, right? So why do we have to have the buildings to be all, you know, gun-free zones and armored so that, you know, they're fortresses against the citizens of Virginia Beach, so that we can't take our guns in there? And that we have a policy where the employees can't defend themselves and have their guns in there? Why would we do that to them, right? So I'm thinking, maybe it's because we're not addressing the problem. Is the problem still that we have a hostile work environment? Are we addressing that? Are we trying to prevent an employee from coming in again and doing this, right? Because it wasn't the citizens that did this, it was an inside job. He knew that the employees were not allowed to carry in there, so he had free rein to go in there. He knew where to go. The police were there like that. They were there in record time, and yet they couldn't stop it. They couldn't get through some of the doors and stuff like that. Is that being addressed? So what is it going to cost if you're going to want to do a gun-free zone and put everything with metal detectors and all that stuff and everything? Is the governor going to pay you that with the $7.5 million he's asking for in the budget to do gun control? I don't think so. You going to do it with the $30 million you asked to retrofit the new building? I don't think so, right? So gun-free zones don't work, so let's oppose this, let's vote no, and it's everybody's right to protect themselves. The Second Amendment, you know, is what we need, and like we said last night, six seconds is all it took. If the people in Building 2 were able to carry, then we wouldn't have had all those people that were killed.
Dana Cottle, Omar Pickron, and then Everett Brown. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having us again. I appreciate your hospitality. I'm sorry, I'll speak a little bit closer to the mic. Thank you for having us here again. Thank you again for your patience. Here's a fact you may or may not be, or may or may not already be aware of. 98% of all mass shootings, and this is reported from the Crime Prevention Research Center, happen in gun-free zones, which makes them one of the most dangerous places to work, live, and play. Many in Virginia Beach are still healing from the May 31 tragedy. I pray this experience never happens again to us in our state, ever. And just wanted to say, guns are not the problem, but gun-free zones and the criminals and ill-intended people that disobey policies and laws are the problems. And when guns are restricted from law-abiding citizens, it doesn't prevent bad people and criminals from doing bad things. It only renders good people helpless. And that's all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Omar Pickron, Everett Brown, and Richard Egger.
Welcome.
Oh, well, this has been my first time here in 15 years. Last time I was here was an AP government class, and it was another long meeting, so... Why? I just don't understand why we're proceeding down this route. These are issues that should be handled by Richmond and Washington. This is a local issue, and we should not sit here and forbid people from bringing guns that are lawful citizens. We have other issues we can be tackling. We could be, as a community, working together for mental health reform and try to find the cause of what's causing people to do these mass shootings in the first place. We keep ignoring that, and no one ever wants to work on that. So I hope that this calm and the storm passes by, we can have short meetings again. I just want the city to go back to what we're really good at and, you know, giving Bruce Thompson more money. Thank you very much.
Everett Brown, Richard Egger, and then Andrew Jackson.
Welcome.
Mr. buddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. I appreciate you all taking the time to listen to me tonight. I'm really surprised at what we're having to deal with here yet again in our great city. Been a lifelong resident, Ms. Henley, you several times over the years. And, you know, what happened here last night, I'd like to thank you for voting for our Second Amendment, those of you who did. Those of you who didn't, I'm really shocked, really disappointed, especially because I know, like you, Ms. Henley, our citizens of Virginia Beach have been supporting the Henley Farm for many decades. But you didn't support us. Again, lifelong resident here, and I'm shocked. I'm also shocked at what we're dealing with tonight and the fact that, Ms. Wood, you even brought this about in our city. Our people need to be able to protect themselves. It's our right. God gives us the right to make choices. But somehow you feel like, Ms. Wood, that you should make choices for us, and it's wrong. It's just wrong. And you can shake your head all you want, but the fact of the matter is, this is not government. This is control, and we will not be controlled. We need, for those six of you who care so adamantly about your citizens, to speak up once again tonight. And you need to oppose this sort of thing in our city. This is a city full of veterans, people who go and defend our country, our Navy, our Army, our Marines, our Air Force. Our people that defend this country, they do it with guns, but we can't have them to defend ourself in our public buildings? These are our public buildings, not yours. And the reason why our, the reason why our forefathers gave us the ability to protect ourselves wasn't just for an active shooter. He gave us, they gave us that ability to protect ourself against you. Because you are the threat. And right now, all these people that are standing behind me today, they're asking you, not everything lawful is just, and if you pass this, it will be unjust.
Richard Egger, Andrew Jackson, and then Perry Burton.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council, thank you for your vote last night. Now, for this bill here, anyone who wants to vote for it, before you vote for it, go to this man right here, look him in his eye and shake his hand and tell him if it happened again, he couldn't defend himself. He's going to have nightmares for the rest of his life. And if he'd have had a gun and to be able to defend himself like Jack Wilson did in six seconds in Texas, he wouldn't have as bad as nightmares. How would you be defenseless and somebody's got a gun and they can shoot you, and there's no way you can fight back? Mr. Ross, you said you care about those victims next door, right? You say, do you know Kate Nixon? You know her story? I didn't think so. She was scared to go to work because one of the employees she felt was unstable. And her husband said, uh, "Carry a gun. You have a gun." She said, "We're not allowed to. It's a gun-free zone." Common sense says gun-free zones, 98% of mass murders happen in gun-free zones. So she couldn't carry a gun. She's dead now, okay? She's dead because she wasn't allowed to have a gun in there. Now, you're alive, you have a gun, I'm surprised, and you're a big man. You don't mind him taking your gun, but I don't know if you're married, you have kids, or maybe one day you will. How would you like your wife to be at home? If somebody broke in, would you want her to be able to stop the threat? Or would you want her to get raped and killed and your kids raped or human trafficked? It's one way or the other. It's a binary choice. There's no third choice. Either she can stop the threat or she can get raped and killed. Which one would you choose, sir? I pray that you will change your mind. There's hope for you. And now you, Ms. Wood, okay? Oh, I ain't even got time for this, okay? You said we need more dialogue. There was over 60 people speaking last night for three and a half hours. How much dialogue do you need? This happened six months ago. It's over 100 districts in Virginia. You know it's coming here, and if you're not prepared and you're not competent, step down. And you had that little smirk on your face on the jumbotron outside, you think we don't notice. Everybody sees that little smirk on your face. Wipe that smirk off your face, man.
Andrew Jackson, Perry Burton, and then Paul Abney.
I got something to say, and I'm going to say it right now. For some of you, there is no more cotton to say. Don't talk to people like you're talking down. Cut it out. Behave yourself.
Come on, folks, please. Gallery, please, respect the speaker.
Thank you. I have seen, I have seen people pull themselves in one direction for whatever reason. Everybody's not going to agree, but we have to be agreeable. We don't have to be disagreeable just to disagree. I looked at this thing several months ago, however long it was, when we had this discussion before. And one of the things that I say, yes, guns save lives. Guns take lives, both. I was in a grocery store that got robbed. Six people in the store. Three of them had guns. The robber got killed, but two of the people that were in the store with guns got killed. They shot each other. You take a building like that building with a number of people in it, and everybody or somebody's got guns. There's a shooter in the building. None of them know who the shooter is yet. So they proceed down the hall to find the shooter. I don't know John backed out because John worked on the other floor. That must be the shooter. There's a reason that everybody doesn't need to run around with a gun. I would hate to be the first policeman that runs in there because I was off that day. I had on civilian clothes. Oh, that's the shooter. Everybody's not law enforcement, and yet we all have... But there's some common sense to this. Yes... Yes, should we protect employees? Does everyone have to have guns to protect employees? There's a lot of buildings you don't go in with a gun. You're not going in a courthouse with a gun. But there's been shootings in courthouses because somebody that had a gun had a gun taken away from them and shot. So guns, or lack thereof, are not necessarily the answer. We need to look at this and say, what is the best way to do it? And it may not be everybody carrying guns. It may not be that you don't have a certain number of people in the building with guns. We don't know the answer to that, but everybody can't be right all the time and everything is not right for everybody. That's the reason people are different. We have different experiences and we think different. First, thank you.
Perry Burton, and then Paul Abney.
Welcome.
Hey, how y'all doing? Good evening. Bringing some energy here this evening, this afternoon. My name is Pyree Burton. Pyree Burton. It's okay. Pyree Burton, I'm Associate Pastor, Christian Way Ministry off of Virginia Beach and Newtown Road. Many of you guys I know I've befriended. I was half asleep and then I saw a passionate speech by a gentleman that was actually at the incident for the shooting and it kept replaying. And then I got a text and I said, "You know what? I need to get up off my pew and come and give my opinion on how I feel about this particular matter." Not just that, because as a minister in our church, you know, we have to up our security just because of where we are in this current day, in time, in age. And it's sad that we have to have fear to come worship publicly. And I know where, you know, when I get into it, you know, my background is I grew up in Eastern Shore of Maryland. My grandfather taught me how to hunt and fish. When I moved here in 86, this was still a very rural area and people, when I went to school, they still had the guns in the back of their pickup trucks and went hunting after they got out of school. That's what I was raised in. So I understand society is not the same as it is today. But what I'm saying is that we didn't have a lot of school shootings back then when a lot of people had guns visible and was accessible to stop crime. I'm in opposition to it because I believe that I want to have protection in the aspect that somebody else does want to do bad things at a bad time. That doesn't make me a bad guy because I oppose it. I believe in this thing that we have that if we all have any conflict, it's called the Constitution. We can just look at this thing, it's called, if we have any rifts on laws legislatively here, locality, look at the Constitution. And in that Constitution, it can just defer any, we can just, it says we can bear arms. Now, I get it, the state locality's got to do things to protect us and stuff like that, I get it, and stuff like that. We all want our own protection. But, but, you know, I, go look at the sheriff. The letter that he puts out is the same where you guys should stand. He's one of the biggest letters-related bodies here. He can lock us up, take our freedom. What did he put out? He said, "I'm gonna do what? Uphold the Constitution." And I know this is tough for you guys and you guys got to go through many different speakers. And I pray for you equally. I pray for the body of Virginia Beach and the whole totality, you know? There's no political stunt on me or anything like that. I love you guys. I love that you guys have to, you got to go through this. And I'm glad I'm not sitting there because, man, goodness gracious, you know? But on, you know, the Constitution is where I stand and I think that you guys should really uphold it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Paul Abney.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Paul Abney. I'm a USS Cole survivor, a 30-year Navy veteran. And I've been working as a defense contractor for the last 12 years. I've been living in this, basically in and out of this city since 1991, but never with the opportunity to vote. So I haven't helped put any of you in here because when I was in the Navy, I was a non-resident living here. I was a resident of Florida. When I got out of the Navy, I moved to North Carolina, basically for tax purposes, but I still, I work here. So I pay taxes here from the work that I do here, not from my Navy pay because I reside in North Carolina, but most of the week, I reside in the house that I purchased here. And I don't have a voice that I can vote any of you out of here. My only voice is right here, right now. I don't want to sound condescending to anybody because I thank you for the jobs that you do. I know this is tough. It's got to be tough to sit here and listen to everybody talk to you. But I want you to think about one thing. It's just the number of people that have talked and what the greatest majority of those people were talking for. And think about that. And if you're going to vote the opposite of that, like four people did last night, well, at least I appreciate the two of you that told us why you did. But we had two that voted against the majority and you didn't tell us why. And so I don't understand that. And I don't have any other way to find out unless you discuss and tell us why you voted against the people. Because my understanding is you work for us, the citizens. And I'm a citizen that can always appeal to you in this way. So I will tell you this. There are four words for love. And my time is almost out, so I'm gonna make this real quick. But the most important one of those is agape love, and that is sacrificial love. Greater love has no man than to damn his life for his friends. And you took that opportunity away if you vote for this. And I just want you to think about that. Thank you.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, that being said, do we have a motion?
So, yes, there is a motion. I'd like to say, though, before the motion, it was my request to have this resolution last night, but that wasn't possible. So you had to come back again today to address it. I would prefer that you would have addressed it yesterday. But I want to also say, you know, yesterday you spoke. Counsel voted to pass the resolution and I respect that process. I respect that decision. I'm just a little bit dismayed, however, by the process that it took, that resolution to get here. And I want to make that distinction clear. That process that it took to get the resolution expedited on the agenda was a grave concern to me. Someone emailed me and told me that they were disappointed in the poor decision that I made. However, the public is not privy to what happens behind closed doors. Why certain resolutions are expedited, why some are not, why some are, why some are more focused on. You're not privy to that. But there's a lot that goes on behind closed doors and behind the scenes that you don't know about. And I could look the other way. I could not say anything, pretend, and go along with the game. But that's not what I'm here to do. This resolution was placed back on the agenda from over six months ago. There were two other resolutions with it. And one of those resolutions was to study what type of comprehensive plan we could input within our municipal buildings. It was delayed because at the time, the majority of counsel stated that it was too soon to deal with this issue. And I understand that. But clearly, yesterday, that was not the case because that resolution was brought, a resolution was brought forward that was germane to the same issue. This resolution represents the community as well, though, just like the community was represented in the resolution last night. And it warrants consideration, just like any other resolution. This resolution is supported, however, by some positive statistics. There was a poll that was implemented in Virginia Beach and it asked the question, would you want to allow your local jurisdiction to ban guns in public buildings? Here are the results. 67% supported it. 26% opposed it. And 7% said not sure. As a result, there is support for this measure in our community. I just don't know if I have the support on counsel this evening for this resolution. And with that, I will redraw, withdraw the resolution on that merit. So I move to...
Okay, Barbara.
I would just like to say that my notes here, we're going to request Ms. Wooten to withdraw, and I really appreciate your coming to that conclusion. And I had several reasons for that. One being that we did pass another resolution last June at Ms. Wooten's proposal, that we evaluate and recommend for implementation enhanced security at city buildings. And we talked about this earlier in our workshop meeting because we asked the city manager to bring to us, after about 30 days following the investigations, recommendations for taking into account those findings and evaluating everything in our buildings, all the possibilities, but primarily to also include our employees. Because I think our employees are critical to giving us the input for how they see we should be dealing with their particular building, their particular situation. And this whole question, I think, needs to have their input. And I would want that before we were to move forward with a resolution such as we have before us. Secondly, and some of these are the very reasons that I could not support the resolution yesterday. It's out of our process for communicating our feelings to the General Assembly on proposed legislation, particularly for bills that we have not yet seen. We have a process for doing that in commenting, in giving our input through our legislative package, or during the process of the session, to have either us as individuals or our representatives commenting to the General Assembly our positions. And we are, we would not be using that process. We would be taking a position on bills that we have not yet seen. And that, I think, would be a very important reason to also not deal with this tonight. And then, of course, it's very important, my feeling, and I know we're doing a lot with resolutions these days, but I think it's very important, resolutions of this import and the import of the one we had last night, that they be compiled with input from all council members with a lot of discussion, as we talked about last night when Ms. Wooten made the proposal that we defer it, so that we could all have input in what that resolution said. And I would think before we would do any resolution to send to the General Assembly about our position, it needs to have a lot of discussion by the full council with the full intent to develop the resolution. And for those reasons, and I did state those things yesterday as my reasons and my concern during our session. And some of you missed that part of the session, apparently. But anyway, I really appreciate your conclusion, Ms. Wooten, because I think it's so important that at this time, as I said yesterday, rather than being divisive, we need to be working together. We do not need a divided council. We do not need a divided community. We have a lot of passion for our city. We all have passion for our opinions. We need to come together and find out where that common ground is. Because I think we really all want the same thing. We just have to figure out how we're going to get there. And I think we can over this, and I really appreciate your request to withdraw.
Thank you. Aaron. Hey, please, please. You know, we respect you, please respect the dice, please.
I appreciate that, Mayor. I'm a big boy. I played in some pretty hostile environments in my time. But I get it. I mean, your anger, your fear, your pain, your passion, it comes with the territory. To sit up here and listen to your harsh criticisms and disrespect, I get it. You know, I wouldn't, you know, ran for public office if I thought I couldn't handle it. So I understand. And I also understand that, you know, there's a lot of emotions around whether it's the Second Amendment, the Constitution, this massacre. But first, let me go back to something from Mr. Leo Johnson. You know, you said some pretty harsh things to me tonight. And one of the things you mentioned, you questioned whether I was there in April 2007. 32 of my friends were killed, April 2007. I'm just going to tell you about one. Ryan Clark. 22 years old, a month, senior, month out from graduating. And Ryan was, Ryan was a cool dude, man. He was, he was one of the guys we would see would run out the tunnel at Lane Stadium and he would be right there with the marching juniors and they would be getting us going. Let's go. Because when you stepped out on that field, even on that campus at Virginia Tech, we all were one. We were all one. So when I came back home and ran for office here, I knew that we all were one. So to make a distinction that somehow because I wasn't in that classroom or I wasn't in Building Two, that I was somehow unaffected, that's pretty harsh, man. Not to mention to think that it has no effect on any of us sitting here, it's pretty harsh. We are affected, whether directly or indirectly. And so one of the other things, you know, that I learned from my experience with that tragedy, it was, and I seen it right away, when the first time this resolution came about, voted no on it. And I voted no on it because I knew, I knew, I foresaw, I foresaw, I had a vision that would be both sides on top of this, on this issue here. It's always the rusty. Take the guns away, people, I want my guns. And where did that leave the victims? Where does that leave our city? And I said, "You know, Lord, you placed me in this position not to take sides in a nonpartisan seat. It's about leading Virginia Beach." I do want a gun. I am a concealed weapons holder. I do, I respect the Second Amendment, the whole entire Constitution. But I knew, just like I knew six months ago, when this resolution came pass, that a vote for that would split one half of our city. I knew the vote last night would split the other half of our city. That's not why I sit in this seat. I don't sit in this seat to separate or divide our community. And long behold, I don't sit in this seat because I don't have the authority. This position on council does not have the authority to regulate or have the authority on firearms. I know how the state elections went. Democrats took over the House. There's a lot of extreme prefiled bills. That's not how we operate. That's not having faith in the system, in government. I'll tell you right now, I will uphold the US Constitution, our Second Amendment. But the seat I serve makes sure I put Virginia Beach first, all of Virginia Beach. And so I see everyone out here exercising your First Amendment rights, talking down to my colleague, disrespecting her. I don't appreciate that. I see, I know you're passionate. You're supposed to be. And I know you, I know you're passionate. Heck, I enjoy shooting my gun out Punggol, too, right? But that's not the way. That's not the way Virginia Beach moves ahead. That's not where we have real change, effective change, voting on legislation that we have no authority of, but yet one side of our city's celebrating, the other side at home crying, not because they're in fear of somebody with a gun, because they may just don't like guns. They may don't like the sound of it, they may just don't want to touch it. They may just don't want to touch it. But to ignore their rights and to ignore your rights, where does that leave us? A house divided. If we've all, and we've all heard that saying, right? A house divided cannot stand. I want us to stand, stand together, stand tall. I want us to have that tough conversation with a room that's not just filled with just one perspective, but with both perspectives so we can really talk and figure out how to make our community safe by protecting all of our rights. So again, I value everyone coming out here tonight. I'm proud that you all have come out here tonight, and those who may be too unafraid to come out here tonight. I speak for you as well. I speak for all of you. And Mr. Leo Johnson, look, man, it comes with the territory. But guess what? I love you. I love, I will. We will talk. Thank you.
Rosemary.
I just briefly want to say, I think we've had two really good nights of being together and hearing from you and the passion that's in your hearts and hearing your stories. It has really meant a lot to me and has really touched my heart. And hearing what you thought and what you've been through in your life experiences and how important this is. You've heard at the beginning of our meeting, a lot of the stuff that we deal with, with zoning issues. But this is the heart of America, of what we've dealt with, with the Second Amendment and the Constitution these last two nights. And I'm very grateful for this time that we've spent together. And I want to thank Councilmember Wooton for withdrawing her motion, her legislation tonight. And I think that really helps bring us all back together rather than dividing us. Thank you for doing that.
It's very distressing to know that our bases in Iran are being attacked at this moment. And I would hope that we could just have a couple of silent moments for our country.
Thank you. Okay, I want to thank everybody.
Do we need to vote on the motion?
Yeah, we will.
I don't believe that a vote is required. The sponsor has requested a withdrawal. Unless there's an objection from the body, it's just withdrawn.
Okay. If I could just make, you know, a closing remark. I want to thank everybody in the gallery. I want to thank everybody at, you know, at this dais. We live in challenging times. We live in dangerous times. There are many bad actors out there in the world today, you know, foreign and domestic. And I guess one of the eye openers was when I became mayor that a lot of events that I go to, I have to have three armed police officers go with me because of the inherent dangers that are out there. And these are tough, emotional times. A lot of people are scared for a lot of reasons. I mean, if you just watch the news, you get scared sometimes. But that being said, you know, we did have dialogue here. And going forward, I can say that we do have a retreat coming up, and we've had a request by several members, you know, to focus our retreats more. And there was a constructive recommendation made by a few this afternoon that we talk about things like building security, but talk about things as a whole. And, you know, the thing is, and I do respect what Aaron said, and I do respect what Sabrina said, but, you know, going forward, that we as a body have significant challenges going forward in so many ways, budgetary and otherwise. And if I could say, you know, we respect your right to speak. But believe me when I say, even in spite of emotion, it's not what you say is how you say it. And sometimes when you come in with the personal attacks, that really, really doesn't help foster the communication and the bridges that we need going forward. The point is, we as a council, as a body, with the challenges that we have going forward, need the public to engage with us. And yes, you have your First Amendment right to say what you want when you're up there, you know, with, to a degree. But, you know, going forward, you know, let's get this unification together. And let's show everybody that Virginia Beach is, in fact, getting unified and that we do things with civility and respect, and sometimes we're going to disagree. But I say that going forward that, yes, the last couple of days, we've had some conversation. But guess what? Let's make it into a positive outcome for everybody. And yes, come together as a council, but also come together as a community. The one thing we found out over the last several months, the strength of Virginia Beach are the people of Virginia Beach with the resolve that we have going forward. But let's go forward, you know, as Aaron said, let's go forward together. And, you know, respect our differences, but let's really focus on what we have in common. And for that, I thank you very much. And at this point, Mr. Vice Mayor, could we do the appointments? Thank you all very much.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate the following individuals to boards and commissions. To the Board of Building Code Appeals, New Construction Division, Emery Chicky. To the Board of Zoning Appeals, Janice Hall as an alternate. Cheryl Avery-Hargrove as an alternate. To the Oceanic Land Use Conformity Committee, Bill Brown, representing the Development Authority. To the Resort Advisory Commission, Michael Ronan.
Okay, no other names?
No, sir.
Votes are open.
By a vote of 10 to 0, you've appointed those nominated or named by Vice Mayor.
Okay, is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, we will adjourn and go and shut the cameras off for open mic.